Okay, so Bennett is the only one that we're missing.
That's correct.
The hour of 6:30, having come and gone seven minutes ago, I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, October 3, 2023, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Madison.
Here.
Alder Madison is present. Alder Martinez-Rutherford.
Here.
Alder Martinez-Rutherford is present. Alder Miazze.
Miazze is present.
Alder Rumel.
Present.
Rumel is present. Alder Slack.
Here.
Alder Slack is present. Alder Tischler.
Here.
Alder Tischler is present. Alder Revere.
Here.
Alder Revere is present. Alder Vitterver.
Present.
Alder Vitterver is present. Alder Helia is excused. Alder Bennett.
Here.
Alder Bennett is present. Alder Conklin.
President.
Alder Conklin is present. Alder Curry.
President.
Alder Curry is present. Alder Duncan.
Here.
Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Field.
Here.
Alder Field is present. Alder Figueroa-Cole.
Here.
Alder Figueroa-Cole is present. Alder Govindarajan.
Here.
Alder Govindarajan is present. Alder Harrington McKenney.
Present.
Harrington McKenney is present. Alder Knox.
Here.
Alder Knox is present. Alder Latimer-Burrus.
Here.
Latimer-Burrus is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I will remind us that we are here to do the business of the people of Madison, and it's my hope that we can do that in a way that refrains from using pejoratives or expletives in our comments, whether we are staff, council members, or folks in the public here to speak to us. And I'd like to ask people to be particularly mindful of the impact that your words may have on other people and the use of the choice of your language. And so I'd just like to ask folks to be respectful and mindful of that as we move through our business today. Alder Harrington McKenney, you have your hand raised?
I do, Madam Mayor, and it's a point of personal privilege. I want to thank you for making that opening statement, that we're mindful of our language and that we are in the chambers to do the people's business, and we should be mindful of the words and the impact of the words that we use, and we should refrain from using those words that are harmful and are considered inappropriate in a business setting as the council chambers is. And I thank you for reminding all of us that we need to make sure that we refrain from using those terms that will be hurtful to some of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right, our first order of business is honoring resolutions today. Item 1 is Legisstar 79953, recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Alder Bennett, I'll turn to you for a motion and to read the resolution.
I move to adopt.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adopt, Alder.
Thank you. Whereas according to the National Domestic Violence Hotline, domestic violence or intimate partner violence is a quote "pattern of behaviors used by one partner to maintain power and control over another partner in an intimate relationship." And whereas domestic violence can look very different on a case-to-case basis and includes physical violence, coercion, threats, intimidation, stalking, emotional abuse, sexual abuse, or economic abuse to control another partner in a relationship. And whereas domestic violence can be a single act or pattern of behavior in all kinds of relationships, including dating, marriage, family, and roommate relationships. And whereas domestic violence is a public health issue that contributes to chronic health problems and often limits the ability of survivors to manage other chronic illnesses. And whereas domestic violence is the leading cause of homelessness for women and children, and the need for safe and affordable housing is one of the most pressing concerns for survivors. And whereas National Intimate Partner Sexual Violence Survey data reports that on average nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States, which equates to more than 10 million people per year. Whereas intimate partner violence accounts for 15% of all violent crime. And whereas the Administration of Children and Families reports that 1 in 3 women and 1 in 4 men experience domestic violence. And whereas women in 2, whereas 1 in 2 female murder victims and 1 in 13 male murder victims are killed by an intimate partner. And whereas black women are three times more likely than white women to die at the hands of their abuser. And whereas women of color who are impacted by domestic violence is 30 to 50% higher than white women. And whereas BIPOC individuals face unique challenges to reporting domestic violence, including a lack of service providers of similar backgrounds and language, as well as institutional racism within law enforcement and criminal justice systems. And whereas in 2019, there are 52 domestic partner homicides in Wisconsin, with 56 of these homicides being committed with a firearm. And whereas a 2015 study found that 1 in 4 women at the University of Wisconsin-Madison experienced sexual assault since entering college. And whereas according to 2022 UWPD Annual Security and Fire Safety Report, rapes on campus have doubled from the previous year. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Madison Common Council and the mayor recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that throughout the month of October, the City of Madison Common Council encourages staff to work to incorporate a survivor-centered approach to citywide issues and proactively seek and implement programs, training, and services that stop domestic violence and abuse.
Thank you, Alder. We have someone here to receive the proclamation. Virginia Gittens from Unidos, if you'd like to come up, please. She'll come and get it, too. Yes, stay and get a picture. There you go.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Virginia Gittens Escudero. I'm the executive director of Unidos. Unidos has been in the county since 1996, and we support victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, more specifically from the Latina, Hispanic, and immigrant community. We want to thank the City Council and the mayor for the resolution on recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Madison, as this is an important issue that many, many families have been affected by nationwide and worldwide. So October is National Domestic Awareness Month. On this month, victim programs across the nation come together to raise the voices of survivors and spread the word about awareness and prevention. It is also a moment to honor the life lost due to domestic violence across the nation. 1 in 3 women and 1 in 4 men and nearly half of LGBTQ+ people will experience DV in their lifetime. DV disproportionately impacts survivors of color, survivors with disabilities, immigrant survivors, and other survivors already experiencing discrimination and oppression. It is a time of uncertainty for many programs across the nation, as we are facing, expecting significant budget cuts in 2024. And as we are thinking about these cuts, we are also thinking about the families that we are serving, especially as it relates to housing. I was at a rally this weekend where I was talking about, a few weeks ago, we had five families in crisis in our office. And all families share one, they were all fleeing abuse, and they all have issues with housing. They are all facing eviction. And I don't have to stress the importance of housing. I think housing is important for everyone, and I can relate to it. I remember the years that I tried in school, it's what because I had a house, I had a home, and a very stable home. And I can imagine how that can be for families that are in the midst of domestic violence and trying to flee an abusive relationship and also having the risk to lose their house. So, and this is to remind everyone that victims are not only battling or fighting domestic abuse, there are other many issues. And again, housing is one, number one in our list. And we hope that in this month, you take that with you and then support victims of domestic violence in any way you can, in our community and across the nation. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 1. Item 2 is Legisstar 80090, affirming and celebrating Monday, October 9, 2023, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. We do not have someone here to receive the honoring resolution, so President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. That brings us to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Seeing, oh, Alder Tischler?
I work for the University of Wisconsin-Madison campus. It is not, one of the items on the agenda, my position has no impact on the University Medical School Foundation, and just wanted to disclose that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field?
Thank you. Similar, I'm also an employee of the University of Wisconsin-Madison, which will not impact my decisions on these.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, there's an item on the agenda relative to the Overture Center parking. I work part-time there, so I recluse myself from that item.
Thank you, Alder. Any further disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll turn to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A consent agenda is moved with recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings except 1, items which are suit extra-majority, 2, items which have registrants wishing to speak, and 3, items which alders have separated out for discussion debate purposes. This document lists extra-majority items, items recommended from the floor, and items introduced, no, I'm sorry. This document includes extra-majority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, and items introduced from the floor. Items with extra-majority terms. Note, extra-majority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Agenda item 45, Legislative File Number 79723, amending the Community Development Division's 2023 adopted operating budget to accept grant funds to implement a senior center vaccine initiative. 15 votes are required. Agenda item 51, Legislative File Number 79781, resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of subordinate water utility revenue bonds and providing other details and covenants with respect thereto, 15 votes required. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda item 13, Legislative File Number 79596, new license for Double Tap in District 4. It is a report of the Alcohol or ALRC and recommended action to re-refer to the Alcohol License Review Committee meeting of 10/18 and return to Common Council on 11/7. Agenda item 15, Legislative File Number 79601, new license for Roxy. This is also a report of the Alcohol License Review Committee, and the recommended actions are to grant with conditions and replace condition 1 with shall hold a valid entertainment license under MGO 38.06 subset 11. Agenda item 18, Legislative File Number 79524, creating section 28.022-00627 of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning at property located at 6853 McKee Road from Plan Development, General Development Plan District to Plan Development Specific Implementation District in District 7. This is a report of the Plan Commission, and recommended action is to re-refer to Common Council's 10/17 meeting. Agenda item 26, Legislative File Number 79605, an entertainment license for Roxy in District 4. It's a report of Alcohol License Review Committee, recommended action is to grant with conditions and replace condition 1 with shall hold a valid entertainment license under 38.06 subset 11. Agenda item 44, Legislative File Number 79504, repealing section 23.07 subset 6 of the Madison General Ordinances and amending section 23.07 subset 13 and 1.08 subset 3 of the MGO to remove associated references. It's a report of the City County Homeless Issues Committee, recommended action is to adopt the substitute. Agenda item 53, Legislative File Number 79868, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a parking lease with HVD Building LLC for 25 to 75 parking stalls at the Overture Center Parking Garage in District 4. Report of the Finance Committee and recommended action is to adopt a substitute. Agenda item 67, Legislative File Number 79226, creating a housing task force addressing Madison's affordable housing shortage and other related housing issues. Report of the Plan Commission and Housing Strategy Committee, recommended action is to return to LEED to approve version 2 or the alternate of the file. Agenda items excluded by either request of alders or speakers registered by 6:30 on October 3 include Agenda Item Number 6, Legislative File Number 79530, a license transfer for the Red Shed, transferring from 406 North Francis to 508 State Street in District 2. Report of the ALRC and requested for exclusion by Alder Revere. Agenda Item Number 19, Legislative File 79777, appeal of the Plan Commission action on the conditional use requests for 3909 and 3913 Lean Road in District 3. We have speakers registered. Agenda Item 44, Legislative File Number 79504, appealing section 23.07 subset 6 of the Madison General Ordinance and amending section 23.07 subset 13 and 1.08 subset 3 of the MGO to remove associated references. Report of the City County Homeless Issues Committee, requested for exclusion by Alder Tischler. Agenda Item 48, Legislative File Number 79719, supporting limitations on city purchases from nuclear weapons producers. Report of the Finance Committee, and we have speakers registered. Items introduced from the floor are Legislative File Number 80130, amending the Community Development Authority 2023 adopted operating budget to finance a change order to the Triangle Redevelopment Master Plan from currently held redevelopment reserves, being introduced by Alder Evers to return to Common Council on October 17. Legislative File Number 80153, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to amend the contract between the City of Madison and Allied Wellness Center to extend the contract term to December 31, 2023, introduced by Alder Vice President Figueroa-Cole to return to Common Council on October 17. Legislative File Number 80200, authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement between Lincoln Capital Acquisition or their successors and the city for the acquisition of a property, portion of the property located at 2007 Roth Street for the Parks Division, introduced by Alder Latimer-Burrus to return to Common Council on October 17. And then Agenda Items with Corrections. Agenda Item Number 82, Legislative File Number 80045, amending various sections of the MGO to remove minimum penalty amounts. It will next be referred to the City County Homeless Issues Committee meeting of October 16, the Public Safety Review Committee of October 11, and Common Council meeting of October 17, 2023. Agenda Item 96, Legislative File Number 80086, authorizing the city to execute a two-year lease agreement with two subsequent renewal terms between the city and UW System Board of Regents, allowing for the placement of site improvements for use by the university's rowing team within Marshall, Wengra, Tenney, and James Madison Parks in District 6, 13, and 19. Originally, this was on the agenda, incorrectly listing District 3 for Wengra Park, but is in District 13.
All right. Thank you, President Curry. Are there additional items that alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none. Let me run through that again, because that was a lot. So, extra-majority items, for your information, are Items 45 and 51. We'll record unanimous votes on those unless there's objection. Items that have different recommendations from the agenda, we will not be discussing these items, but please note that when you vote for the consent agenda, these are the recommendations you'll be voting for. On Item 13, the recommendation is to re-refer to ALRC on 10/18 and Council on 11/7. On Item 15, the recommendation is to grant with altered conditions. On Item 18, the recommendation is to re-refer to the 10/17 Council meeting. On Item 26, the recommendation is to grant with altered conditions. On Item 44, the, sorry, Item 44 will be excluded. On Item 53, the recommendation is to adopt the substitute. And on Item 67, the recommendation is to adopt the alternate. And then items that will be excluded are Items 6, 19, 44, and 48. We have 3 introductions from the floor, Legisstar Files 80130, 80153, and 80200. And then on Item 82, there's a correction on the referral date, and on Item 96, there's a correction on the impacted districts. Questions? Do I need to do that again? No. Good? All right. So then, President Curry, on the consent agenda, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Are there questions, discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. And that will take us to public comment. Our first item for public comment is Item 19, the appeal of the Plan Commission action on conditional use request for 3909 and 3913 Lean Road in District 3. This is, the original item is Legisstar ID 78197. On Item 19, our first registrant is Justin Barnes of Club Car Wash, to be followed by Jared Schmidt, to be followed by Gregory Everts. Do we have Justin?
Good evening, Common Council and Mayor Rhodes Conway. My name is Justin Barnes. I'm the vice president of development and construction for Club Car Wash. As you know, Club Car Wash applied for the conditional use permit at 3909 and 3913 Lean Road. Despite being approved by the UDC and the Plan Commission staff, the CUP application was denied in August at Plan Commission. Club Car Wash has appealed this denial. I'm appearing today to provide you the council background about Club Car Wash, and will then turn things over to Jared Schmidt, the engineer for our project, and Greg Everts, our counsel on the application, who will provide additional information about the project and the process so far. A little background on Club Car Wash. Club Car Wash was founded as a family-owned business in 2006. That time had one car wash. Today, we operate over 140 car washes that stretch from the Rio Grande Valley all the way up to Green Bay, Wisconsin. In addition to Green Bay, Wisconsin, we've got other sites here in this wonderful state of Fond du Lac, Appleton, Nina, Manasha, and Green Bay, and currently in construction in Manitowoc and Sheboygan. Club Car Wash's main foundation is a membership wash, or a membership model, rather. Our customers can purchase a membership for a monthly car wash package, as well as buy retail washes at certain levels and price points. As the vice president in development and an expert in the car wash industry, I can share with you that the car washes are a support service and do not bring additional trips to an area. Club Car Wash generally seeks locations in existing high vehicular traffic areas near existing destination retailers, including grocery stores, because citizens are already driving to those stores for the goods. This location that we have at 3909 Lean Road is well-positioned for a car wash, as there's 45,000 cars going along that thoroughfare. It's nearby the Hy-Vee, the Target, the Aldi, which bring extensive traffic to the area already, as evidenced by their large parking lots. By placing a car wash proposed facility nearby, we're allowing those drivers who are in the area to utilize these services as they're containing their goods already in those markets. We are very proud of our community partnership. Club Car Wash seeks to be an exceptional community partner by maintaining each site in top condition and by supporting community philanthropic efforts. We partner with youth sports, activity groups in each of the communities we serve, and additional partners with the Children's Miracle Network, which we raised to date this year over $1 million for that. Next, I would like to introduce Jared Schmidt. He's our engineer for the project and can share why Club Car Wash's application is consistent with the neighborhood and applicable land use requirements. Thank you.
Our next registrant is Jared Schmidt of Hobart, Wisconsin, representing Club Car Wash, to be followed by Gregory Everts. Jared?
Thank you. Good evening, council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. Jared Schmidt with REL, we're the engineering consulting firm to facilitate the entitlement of the site development work with staff in the city to navigate the process. Overall, the project as a whole is going to be replacing a vacant site paved. There's a lot of restrictions on that site from cross-access easements that would be cleaned up as part of this project. Our project as a whole is a two-story car wash. It is a mixed use. It has a wash on the first floor with regional district training facilities in space on the second level for Club Car Wash to utilize as they continue to build their brand in and around the area. The site itself has ample space, and it's been allocated and designed specifically to facilitate queuing, circulation, and overall operations. That was intentionally done to limit any spillage that goes on the public right-of-ways or off-property. Within that, Club Car Wash itself is considered an express wash. That's their priority. They can process a vehicle every 30 seconds, so continuously moving, keeping cars on-site for as short amount of time as possible to reach the desired objective, which is cleaning the cars, helping keeping that road grit and solids out of our surface waters, and helping improve that from a water quality component. The overall layout, as we've discussed, is very specifically designed to be self-contained and not trend off-site. The site itself is a CCT zoning district with a TOD overlay, and what that is, is that it allows for this use as a conditional permitted use. Again, a conditional permitted use, saying a car wash can be put on this, provided we meet the guidelines of those zoning codes, which we do, and we're willing to meet the conditions that are put forth to us. Staff has presented a good number of conditions, all of which we're willing to meet and exceed. So when we look at it from a code perspective, and we look at specifically standard 4, there is a restriction, or what was specifically talked about at council, saying that we did not meet that, is we will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property uses permitted in the district. Again, two-story wash, mixed use, orderly development. The seller of this property- The seller of this property is developing the 190 units directly adjacent to us for residential use. That's the old Howard Johnson. The seller is selling a property to a car wash, so they must believe that we're a compatible scenario for this use adjacent to the overall goals of the department, as well as the city.
You have about 15 seconds.
Thank you. I'm all through. So, we appreciate the opportunity. Again, we meet the conditions and the requirements of code. And with that, I will pass it off to Greg.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gregory Everts of District 4, representing Club Car Wash. Gregory?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Greg Everts here on behalf of Club Car Wash. And I'm here to address the legal issues surrounding the application. The Planning Division staff recommended approval of this project. The Urban Design Commission approved it. It is a recommended use for the area. The Plan Commission did not approve it, and we're asking that you vote to override that decision. So first, the legal requirement. State statute has something to say about this, and it specifically says that if the project meets all the conditions that are set in the city ordinances or by the city zoning commission, and the applicant agrees to meet those requirements, that approval is mandatory. And that is from state statute, and I'm quoting, "If an applicant for a conditional use permit meets or agrees to meet all of the requirements and conditions specified in the city ordinance or those imposed by the city zoning board, the city shall grant the conditional use permit." And the legislative history of that provision, which was enacted in 2017, makes clear that the legislator meant this to be mandatory. So the denial has to be based on what's called substantial evidence, which is defined as facts and information other than merely personal preferences or speculation directly pertaining to the requirements and conditions an applicant must meet to obtain a conditional use permit, and that reasonable persons would accept in support of a conclusion. So that's the legal overlay that the council needs to keep in mind. Here, the Plan Commission said that there were two standards that weren't met, and one of them was Approval Standard 7. I'll take that one first, because it's easier. It said, so they say the use is auto-only and only benefits auto modes of transportation, and does not support transit, which is contrary to and violates the goals of the TOD overlay ordinance. Well, the reality is, this is a mixed-use area, and auto uses are one of those uses that are allowed. And the conclusion there is just legally unsupported. Car washes are even allowed in the transit district. And if you look at 28.104 of the ordinance, the Transit Oriented Development Overlay District, it specifically discusses standards for automobile infrastructure. So, again, it's not a requirement that it has to be only a transit-oriented use. And it specifically mentions gas pumps, gas station canopies, and car wash vacuum stalls. So that's in the Transit Overlay District itself. So the Approval Standard 7, it's certainly not something that this application does not meet. It does, in fact, meet it. And then with respect to Standard 4, you've heard from our colleague about how, again, we're in a district of 45,000 cars going by. I'll stop there. We're happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other registrants on this item. Are there questions for any of the registrants on Item 19? Alder Slack.
Yes, thank you. So you had reached out to talk about this project, and we talked about some ideas that could bring additional benefit to that location. I'm wondering if you are willing to speak to those ideas.
I assume you're Amy Herriman?
I'm Kate Duncan.
Kate Duncan, okay.
Registered to answer questions.
I don't have you registered, so if you'll just double-check that after you speak, that'd be fine.
Yes, for sure. So, good evening, Madam Mayor and Alders. My name is Kate Duncan. I also represent Club Car Wash. One of the attorneys, we did, we've reached out to Alder Slack, and we did have some discussions about other things that Club Car Wash may be able to do to make this a more transit-oriented development. You know, we're here because we want to have a car wash at this location, and so that means, you know, we do feel strongly in our position that the Plan Commission made a wrong decision. However, we still want to be at this location, and we'd like to work with the city on potential ways forward. So we did discuss, and Alder Slack had a couple of really good ideas about trying to make this a more transit-friendly location and a transit-friendly development. So we discussed perhaps adding some additional bike racks to allow parking, bike parking for the public, for folks that may be using the BRT at a stop that's not too far from this particular site. So we're open to considering that and to adding some additional bike parking on the site in order to make this a more transit-friendly development. We also discussed, Alder Slack mentioned there's a new homeless shelter that's being constructed that is also along the BRT. And we discussed maybe having some sort of a hiring outreach with the homeless shelter so that folks that are using the homeless shelter may also have the opportunity for discussion about employment with the car wash facility. And so as a result, the BRT could be sort of incorporated, and the use of the homeless shelter and the car wash facility could perhaps be sort of, could mesh well together. So those are, those are some of the things we have considered in the last day or so to, you know, try to make this a more transit-friendly development that would be hopefully satisfactory to the city of Madison.
Does that answer your question, Alder? Yep, thank you. Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
Yeah. I'm curious about, looking at the plan and knowing that area pretty well, what is the potential for overflow of people in queue possibly blocking traffic and/or transportation, public transportation?
There will be no spillage of cars onto Washington Avenue or Lean Road. Those are the two roads. We have zero direct access from the car wash facility onto either of the roads. You have to use internal service drives in order to get to either of the roads. And I will let Jared, who is the site engineer, talk a little bit about how cars queue on the site, and, you know, sort of the pace at which they progress through the site.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Kate. As she stated, the intent and the processing, you know, pushing a car every 30 seconds is a really important part of our overall process. And when you look at the site, it's stacked from Washington, let's just call it east because it's on an angle, so it makes it a little more fun to talk about, is, the building is positioned up close to Washington. That site's pretty low right now, so we'd actually bring it up to give that building better presence to the street, which is important. And then the next two rows are vacuum parking stalls, so that, we have it up on the screen, so that vehicles are able to vacuum out the insides. And then, as you progress farther to the right, or east-southeast, is where you initially enter the pay line. So being in a model in which subscription makes up a significant percentage of the users, there's an express lane and there's the pay lane. So express lanes can continue through and process quickly and get into line. There's room for about 14 or 16 cars from the pay lane, which is the dark slashed on the far east side, out to the first private drive. You can put another seven or eight cars past the pay lane. There can be six cars within the wash at any given time. You can have 15 to 18 cars being vacuumed. So just from a specific standpoint, we can, we can have 50 cars without any concern. Now, when you look at it beyond that, there's private drives, both internally and shared based on ownership, because there's not public right-of-ways, as Kate stated. There's the public street off to the side, and there's Lean Road just off the screen to the northeast. So the reality is, you know, we can exceed 50 cars on-site at any given time. The wash is also fully staffed. So in the event that something would happen, or a car is blocking, or is, you know, maybe confused down process because it's their first time there, the staff is able to quickly go out and push along that way. We can block accesses and push cars through if queuing would become too long. But again, that express model component is really important to keeping everyone processing through quickly. So we feel that the site configuration prevents that. We feel that the fact that it's staffed helps prevent that further, and we do not believe that spillage to public right-of-ways will be an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we're talking about the correct area. Is this where the former Aldi is? Is that correct?
There is an Aldi there, is my understanding, yeah.
It's in, so if I'm not mistaken, there is another car wash, like a block away, the Octopus. Is that still up and running?
No.
The Octopus car wash has closed down?
I think. You know, maybe Amy can come talk about the Octopus car wash.
Hi, Amy Herriman, Corals &amp; Brady. Do you know where the Hy-Vee is off of East Washington?
Yes.
It's, and so the Hy-Vee parking lot is just kitty-corner to us, or sort of the site. So it's in front of the old Howard Johnson Plaza, so it's that frontage space that would be in front of.
In front of the hotel. But is the Octopus car wash a block away still open?
So there's the Octopus, or it was Octopus, and then Mr. Clean bought it out. That's up kind of by the square up here, that's kind of by the Sylvie, or a different...
I'm not talking about that one. I'm talking, it's closer, like where the Denny's is, and it's the next block over from Lean Road. Thier Road, is it Thier Road? There's another car wash that's right there. I'm just wondering if that's still up and running.
No, my understanding is that there's not a car wash nearby.
Alder, I'm not sure it's really a question the applicants can answer.
Oh, okay.
Google might be able to answer it.
I mean, to my point, I was wondering, was there a reason why we wanted to have another car wash there if there's already a car wash up and running?
No, ma'am. We wouldn't want to go that close to one, and I don't think we're looking into it right now. If there's one there, it's one that we did not see, and we, you know, it kind of fits into our criteria. When we come into the market, the traffic counts, the commercial district, and then the competition proximity to where that location is. So I can't sit here and say that it's not there, but I can tell you that in our research that we had before, it did not show up on anything that we had that it was there.
Yeah, I'm just, that's what I'm concerned about, is that I feel like there is another car wash. I just don't know if it's up and running, so that's why I wanted to bring that to your attention. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
I really sort of had a similar question around, just in your market research, how, you know, is there customer demand for a new car wash of that size in that area?
Sure.
Two questions, that's the first one, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
So there is criteria that we follow. You know, we like to have at least 30,000 cars on a street that's out in front of us that joins our property. The commercial corridor that I was telling about before, we've got anchor retailers, such as a national grocer, as in Hy-Vee. There's the benefit of the additional Aldi that's there, the Target. So we like to be in those commercial centers. So we're utilizing the traffic that's already being generated there. We don't feel as though the car wash is a destination location where you're going to drive across town or drive way out of town to get a car wash. You're going to do it as a supplemental service as to go in to get your goods at one of those retailers.
Thank you. Then my next one is not necessarily, it's really a thought along with something, some things it sounds like you talked with Alder Slack about, but in my district, there's a temporary shelter. In the district bordering 3, there's the, will be the permanent shelter. And so folks who are dealing with homelessness oftentimes need space to just be. And so I would encourage you, if whatever pans out, also thinking about a creative space that would offer people a place to just, really just be and exist in between, you know, just to rest, to charge a phone, sort of like a coworking space at a car wash, you know, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in queue for questions, so thank you all. And my apologies, I missed in my refresh that we have one registrant wishing to speak. Oh, I'm sorry, Alder Latimer-Burris, did you have a question for the registrants on 19? Go ahead, Alder.
I just wanted to ask the attorney, what were the two statutes, the Wisconsin statutes that he was referencing?
Yeah, here's the site for it. Again, it's Wisconsin Statute 62.23, sub 7, sub DE, which relates to conditional use permits.
Okay.
So it's in Chapter 62 of the Wisconsin statutes relating to cities.
Okay, so I heard with Stat 62.23, subject in 7, DE, number D and E, or letters D.
It's in parentheses, small d e. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right, one more time, any final questions for the registrants on this item? If not, then on Item 6, which is a license transfer involving the Red Shed, we have one registrant wishing to speak, Lynn Deefenbach of District 18. Do we have Lynn?
Good job on getting the name right. Nobody ever pronounces it correctly.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lynn Deefenbach. I'm the current owner of the Red Shed, which has been part of Madison for 54 years. We've been located on North Francis Street for all of those 54 years. In 2019, my husband and I purchased the bar. Unfortunately, in 2020, during the pandemic, when we were shut down, I lost my husband to cancer. We were able to reopen, and with my awesome staff and support of our community, we have been doing okay there. Unfortunately, in March of 2023, we were told that the building was sold and our lease would not be renewed. So we started looking for a new location. We found a location at 508 State Street, which we thought was going to be a great location for us, because it's a little bit bigger, little bit nicer area as far as more foot traffic. Unfortunately, I then realized there's zoning issues with that. And so I've been working with Alderman Revere and some of the other city staff to see if we can resolve this, the issue of, I wanted to be a tavern, which we had been for 54 years. I am okay with going to be a restaurant tavern. And looking at some of my numbers, I think we could do 48% liquor, 50% food, and 2% other sales of merchandise, and then amusement. We have pool tables and foosball and that type of thing there. So I think we could make a go of it, changing to a restaurant tavern to meet the criteria for that area. We're going to have expanded spaces, I said, which is giving us the option of a better prep kitchen, and we're going to improve our equipment. So we'll have a fryer, as well as our char grill to keep that open, and a bigger flat top. I'm not the cook, so I'm having trouble with some of the words. So we're just hoping that that works out for us, so we can just move.
Thank you. This is the only registrant on this item. Are there any questions? Alder Bennett?
Could you tell us about how denying a license at this time would impact your ability to open? Denying or referring?
It would slow down the process for us opening. Obviously, if you deny the license somewhere, there's, we can't open. And slowing it down is going to affect the build-out. We have to build out the area because it was previously a retail space. So we want, the architect wants to make sure he knows how to go ahead, and then we have to submit all the plans to the city. And then the biggest impact will probably be on my staff that I'm trying to keep on the payroll as much as I can, and our, people are actively trying to poach them as we speak. So I have a very small staff to start with, and so I'm, and they're awesome, but I really need to keep them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the registrant? Seeing none, thank you very much. All right, so then we will go on to Item 44, which is a substitute amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances related to trespassing. And our first registrant wishing to speak is Kim Richman of District 16, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe. Kim?
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity. Good evening, Madam Mayor and all Alders. Tonight, I'm speaking in opposition of Agenda Item Number 44, the repeal of the unlawful trespass code, Section 6. The substitute version of the original attempt to repeal the ordinance really doesn't do much of anything. We all know about the old adage, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." I have yet for somebody to tell me how this unlawful trespass code ordinance is broken. I have not heard anybody say that. Without a shadow of a doubt, to repeal this ordinance would increase both the risk and activity that it was meant to prevent. The repeal would allow anybody to camp on private property, and it's not considered trespassing until they are notified and the person refuses to leave. The substitute version of Item 44 allows the property owner or occupant to have somebody else as an authorized, let's just call it, a known... to have somebody else as an authorized, let's just call it a notifier, to let the person know that they're trespassing and to leave. I'll personally appoint my alder as my authorized notifier to inform, I'm sorry, to inform the trespasser at 2:00 a.m. on a weekday morning. You don't have to look any further than social media to see what folks are saying about finding somebody camping on their property without permission. There are posts about taking matters into their own hands by physically removing them or releasing their dogs towards them. On this same topic, I was reading a discussion on the Castle Doctrine, if you can imagine that, or which is the Stand Your Ground protection, on two different social platforms. We don't need vigilantes. Those of you who know me know I'm all about community safety, and this doesn't sound very safe for anybody to me. If the ordinance is repealed, there's a good chance it would reopen the door for encampments to return. I don't think there are many folks in Madison who would welcome the return of the McPike Park and Rindell Park encampments, which included drug use, including overdoses, fights, stabbings, and human trafficking. There are plenty of safe places for folks to sleep or camp, including churches and shelters here in Madison. Camping on a property that doesn't belong to you certainly doesn't guarantee your safety like a church or shelter would. My final statement is, in closing, do we really want to have no trespassing signs on every property here in Madison? How welcoming is that? Stay safe and have a great evening. Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Bonnie Rowe of District 11.
Good evening, Mayor and Alders. I'm in opposition to the repeal of Section 6. Some Alders have used their blogs to try to clarify the issues, but they reveal the problem. One of your blogs from today says, "All trespassing is illegal under Section 2." It's very calculating to say that, because while true, it hides the bigger truth. The beauty of Section 6 is it gives a presumption of privacy when it comes to someone sleeping or taking up temporary habitation on your property. It also gives a sleeping person protection. Community Development Director Jim O'Keefe has said, "It is not safe to camp or live outdoors on public or without the owner's consent private property." Imagine how risky it is to sleep on someone's property without their knowledge or consent. I wouldn't want to do it. People have been shot in yards for other non-threatening behavior. There are a lot of homeowners with guns in Madison, and I've seen plenty of vigilante-style comments about what someone would do if they found someone sleeping in their yard without their knowledge and consent. Someone could even innocently let their dog out in the yard to go to the bathroom in the night, and an unfortunate encounter could take place. And then who is liable? And is that even what matters? Unlike Section 2, which requires notification in order to be trespassing, Section 6, which you want to repeal, requires prior permission. Just like the other sections underneath Section 2, Section 6 was added to the trespass code on purpose. Their common sense safeguards for when giving notice may pose a safety risk. Section 4, someone's animal is on your property without your permission, you want to go out and give notice? Section 5, someone is inebriated on your lawn, you want to go out and give them notice? And Section 6, someone is sleeping on your property, you want to wake them up to give them notice? What could go wrong? Why single out Section 6 for removal at all? Is it just to increase the fines on possibly unsheltered people? Since the maximum fine under Section 2 is $500, and the maximum fine for Section 6, which you want to repeal, is only $300? How fair is that? Yes, all trespassing is illegal under Section 2, but it is not trespassing under Section 2 until notice is given and the person refuses to leave. The substitute version does nothing to protect those sleeping on someone else's property, as it still gets rid of prior permission. Whatever happens tonight, it sends a signal. Those voting to repeal have a presumption that others are welcome to sleep on their own private property, even if they don't add "at your own risk." Those voting against it may still let you sleep on their property, but they would like you to ask first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Those are all the registrants we have wishing to speak on Item 44. Are there questions for either of the registrants? Seeing none. And we will go on to, sorry, scrolling. Item 48, which supports limitations on city purchases from nuclear weapons producers. Our first registrant wishing to speak is Jerry Folk of District 12, representing the Interfaith Peace Working Group, to be followed by Paula Rogge. Jerry?
I'm Jerry Folk. Nice to be here. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak about this issue that's coming up now. Martin Luther King Jr. often reminded us that in the atomic age in which we live, we have been brought to the end of the road of violence. Choice between, for humankind today, is not between violence and non-violence, King said. It's between non-violence and non-existence. We, as human beings, must either eliminate war, or war will eliminate us. We can't juggle this mass of weapons indefinitely. Somebody's going to drop the ball, and that will be it. And that's what King was trying to say to us when he said, "It's not a choice between violence and non-violence. We either end war, or war will end us." King was not the first person to say that. I don't know how many of you have seen the movie Oppenheimer. But 20 years before Dr. King made those statements, many of the world's nuclear physicists were saying the same thing. One of those was Albert Einstein. Here's how Einstein put it, quote, "The release of atomic energy has not created a new problem. It has merely made more urgent the necessity of solving an existing one." There has been a quantum leap, this is still a quote from Einstein, "a quantum leap technologically in our age." But unless there is another quantum leap in human relations, unless we learn to live in a new way towards one another, there will be a catastrophe, a global catastrophe. Then Einstein went on to offer advice about how we can avoid that catastrophe. His advice is the same advice that has been given to us for thousands of years by our greatest sages and seers, like the Buddha, Jesus of Nazareth, and the prophet Muhammad. Here's how Einstein put it, quote.
You have about 30 seconds.
"Our task must be to free ourselves by widening our circle of compassion to embrace all living things and the whole of nature and its beauty," end quote. Support for Nuclear Disarmament Resolution 79719, which you will soon be considering, gives you an opportunity to express your compassion for every woman, man, and child, indeed, for every living creature on this planet, by speaking out against and withdrawing financial support for one of the greatest threats to life on Earth today, nuclear weapons. Thank you for your time and for your support.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Paula Rogge of District 14, representing Physicians for Social Responsibility, to be followed by Maureen McDonald. Paula?
I'm Paula Rogge, and I'm representing not just Physicians for Social Responsibility, Wisconsin, but 16 other community and faith groups. Let me give you a snapshot of Hiroshima. On August 6th, just after an atomic bomb was detonated above the city, the city's center was flattened, everything was black. All buildings were gone except the remnants of a church and a hospital, and no living thing was visible. The only trace of human existence were shadows on concrete. One quarter of the city's population died in that attack, and another quarter died within months of the blast. Today, there are nearly 13,000 nuclear bombs worldwide, each one 10 to 20 times as powerful as the bomb that was dropped on Hiroshima and on Nagasaki. Even a limited nuclear war, say between Pakistan and India, using less than 2% of the world's nuclear stockpiles, could lead to the immediate death of 125 million people, and the death of another 2 billion from starvation due to climate disruption and crop failures. In 1986, Presidents Reagan and Gorbachev met and agreed to decrease their nuclear stockpiles. Their negotiations led to a drop from 60,000 weapons worldwide to 13,000 today. Yet despite this, the threat of nuclear war has increased. Nine countries now have nuclear weapons. Climate change resulting in droughts is leading to massive migration and conflicts over water access. The U.S. and Russia are engaged in a new nuclear arms race, and China is trying to catch up. Russia has threatened to use tactical nuclear weapons in Ukraine, and North Korea has threatened to use nuclear weapons if the U.S. places nuclear subs or bombers in South Korea. When the U.N. voted in favor of a treaty on the prohibition of nuclear weapons in 2017, we Americans asked what we could do to encourage our nation to join the treaty. We were told to start a grassroots campaign. These campaigns can work. Witness the 1983 Freeze Movement, which led to a complete change in President Reagan's thinking and to his talks with President Gorbachev. So tonight you'll be voting on a Nuclear Disarmament Resolution, which takes us back from the brink of nuclear war by calling on the U.S. to work with other nuclear states in a multilateral, verifiable agreement.
About 30 seconds left.
Thank you. And in addition, this resolution also limits investments in and contracts with nuclear weapon producers, which would make Madison the third-largest city in the U.S. and the first city in the Midwest to do so. So 40 years ago, Madison declared itself a nuclear-free zone. In 2019, we passed a proclamation honoring the victims of Hiroshima and Nagasaki. It's time now to honor this legacy by passing this Nuclear Disarmament Divestment Resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Maureen McDonald of District 13, representing the Dominican Sisters.
Thank you. I'm Maureen McDonald, Dominican Sister, and representing the Interfaith Peace Working Group. My two wonderful colleagues, Jerry and Paula, have clearly laid out why we are urging you to guide Madison into becoming one of the U.S. cities that will move the world back from the brink of nuclear war. This would be a great gift, I think, that Madison could give to mend the dangers hanging over all humankind and all creatures on this beautiful planet Earth. We have the power to do this. We need to claim our power. Leaders over thousands of years have urged us to use that power, economic power, moral power, spiritual and human power, to move us to live in new ways, and we are capable of that. We just need to do it, and what better time than now to do it? Our local actions can make a global difference. Local affects global. Pope Francis said this, "In the name of God and in the name of the sense of humanity that dwells in every heart, I renew my call for an immediate ceasefire in Ukraine. Let there be a halt to arms, and let us seek the conditions for negotiations. The fate of the world hangs in the balance." And there he was referring to the nuclear threat that has been issued in the course of this war in Ukraine. So many global voices have warned us, along with Pope Francis, of the huge dangers of not acting now when the fate of the world engaged in war literally hangs in the balance. As many as eight U.S. Catholic Dominican congregations have strong corporate stances calling for the following actions: cuts in the nuclear arsenals of the superpowers. A real end to the arms race, a real end to it. Real negotiations and actions to halt the testing, production, and deployment of nuclear weapons systems. All these things have been spoken about, but we haven't really acted upon them. This stance has been placed, in place, for our congregation of Cincinnawo Dominicans since 1986. And we have tried to work towards those goals, but not, still not successful, of course, as the world has not yet been successful.
You have about 20 seconds left.
Thank you. I close with this urgent plea of, I'm a great aunt with a bunch of, a big family of nieces, nephews, grandnieces, and nephews, from our two-year-old Magdalena to our 56-year-old Tom, my nephew. And I want those people to be able to live peacefully in a world of equity, beauty, free from fear. And I think this resolution for disarmament helps make that possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the registrants wishing to speak on this item. Are there questions for any of these registrants? Seeing none. Those are all the items that we have folks wishing to speak. So that will bring us to the end of public comment. And we'll move on through the agenda, starting with Item Six, which is Legis 79530, License Transfer for the Red Shed from 406 North Francis Street to 508 State Street, Unit A. On Item Six, President Curry, would you like to make the motion?
Move to adopt with condition.
The motion is to adopt with conditions. Is there a second? All right, moved and seconded to adopt with conditions, Alder Verveer.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to amend the motion to grant with conditions so that the following conditions are included. Condition number one is the recommendation of the Alcohol License Review Committee. And so to repeat that condition, it is, number one, no patrons are permitted to enter or re-enter the establishment after 1:30 a.m. on Friday and Saturday nights. Condition number two, establishment shall meet the definition of a restaurant as defined in Madison General Ordinances, Section 38.02, at all times. And thirdly, food shall be available at all times. I'm happy to repeat those additional ones if necessary.
Thank you, Alder. That's a motion. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Would anyone like Alder Verveer to repeat the conditions? Alder Verveer?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor, and thank you. It was Alder Figaro who requested they be repeated. I draw my colleagues' attention to, again, our agenda for this Agenda Item Number Six. So condition number one is there in the legislative history. Number one, no patrons are permitted to enter or re-enter the establishment after 1:30 a.m. on Friday and Saturday nights. And then I would draw my colleagues' attention, and others perhaps following along, to Agenda Item Number Nine, a similarly situated alcohol license application that was granted as part of our consent agenda motion. And you'll see that those remaining conditions, so there would be condition number two, establishment shall meet the definition of a restaurant as defined in Madison General Ordinances, Section 38.02, at all times. And lastly, third, food shall be available at all times.
Thank you, Oliver. Do you wish to speak to the motion further?
Yes, please, Mayor. So this, Mayor is unorthodox, and that's admittedly the case. The applicant obviously explained in her testimony tonight the situation. Let me just add the following. I am familiar with this establishment as it was located in the 4th Aldermanic District prior to the most recent redistricting. And I'm also familiar with it as a longtime member of the Alcohol License Review Committee. At our last ALRC meeting, this transfer application was before us. And I'll mention that transfer applications for alcohol licenses are rather rare. A transfer under Wisconsin Statute, Chapter 125, is when a license holder physically is moving from one geographic location within a municipal. is moving from one geographic location within a municipality to another. So in this case, from the 400 block of North Francis Street to the 500 block of State Street, that's a transfer. Otherwise, it would be a new, a new license in most other situations, for example, in the case of a second establishment, for example. Anyway, at the Alcohol License Review Committee meeting, there was some concern articulated to be sure that there could be issues with the zoning code, Chapter 28, and specifically the alcohol overlay district. The alcohol overlay district in Chapter 28, formerly, for those of us that have been in City Hall for a long time and longtime observers, formerly was called the Alcohol License Density Ordinance. The idea behind that public policy is to limit the amount of alcohol licenses in the traditional downtown entertainment district adjacent to the UW campus. So that's the zoning issue that the applicant spoke to in her testimony. I'll also point out that City Zoning Administrator Katie Bannon is with us this evening, if any colleagues have questions of her about the alcohol overlay district. As you heard in the testimony, the Red Shed lost their lease. They did not want to move. They were forced to move, and as such, because of the alcohol overlay district, they will have to, they always intended to offer more food, to try to pivot to be more of a restaurant. Now legally, they will be required to do so. As per the zoning code, as per the conditions in the motion that is before us at this point, I will add and just call out that the applicant, in her testimony, stated that she believes, after thinking about this long and hard, and we have had several conversations with her, that she believes that she can do so. She submitted to the City Clerk's Office this morning a revised floor plan, which is in Legisstar for this item, so you can see the revised floor plan in Legisstar for this Agenda Item Number 6. And in discussing this earlier today with Building Inspection Director Tucker, he believes that, based on that floor plan, that the plan review specialists in zoning, obviously that work with zoning administrator Bannon and Building Inspection Director Tucker, believe that the requirements in the zoning code, specifically the supplemental regulations in terms of seats and so forth, can be met, but of course, they haven't done the official review yet. Furthermore, just in wrapping up here, I want to emphasize that the applicant stated in her testimony that she believes that she will be able to do, follow the definition of a restaurant in our alcohol regulations, Chapter 38, and in the zoning code, Chapter 28, whereas you heard her say, as a reminder here, 48% alcohol, 50% food, 2% other, namely arcade revenue. Let me close by saying that there were no concerns articulated whatsoever in the ALRC public hearing, no concerns obviously articulated tonight, including at the ALRC meeting, no concerns articulated by the Madison Police Central District Command Staff. So I urge my colleagues to support the motion to grant with those three conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. So the motion before us is to amend the original motion, to add additional conditions. Is there any objection to just having that be the main motion, to approve with three Not seeing any objection to that, so we'll consider that the main motion. So the motion is to grant the license with the three conditions as articulated by Alder Verveer. Attorney Haas?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I know we're in discussion time, but I think we should probably have the applicant agree to those conditions, since we're adding conditions, to make sure that that's understood and clear.
She's nodding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. All right, Alder Bennett?
Yes, I just wanted to speak briefly. Alder Verveer articulated it far better than I ever could, but I just wanted to lend my support to Lynn and to the Red Shed and to all the staff there. I know it's a beloved bar tavern and now restaurant tavern in the downtown area, as many took to social media in droves when they learned that the Red Shed needed to close. And although I don't think this is the desired result of the Red Shed, nor is it great, I'm glad that we were able to come to a solution that was amicable, and it just shows the resiliency of small businesses. So I also urge you all to support approval with stated conditions.
Thank you, Alder. We have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion is to grant the license with three conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, the license is granted with those conditions. That will take us then to Item 19. Item 19 is Legisstar 79777, an appeal of the Plan Commission action on a conditional use request for 3909 and 3913 Lean Road, and Item 19. President Curry, I would suggest that, to avoid the confusion we had last time, that the motion be to uphold the appeal.
Uphold the appeal. Move to uphold the appeal.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to uphold the appeal. Let me just clarify then the motion. If the motion passes, which would require 14 votes, you would be overturning the action of the Plan Commission and upholding the appeal granting the conditional use for this property. If the motion fails to achieve the required 14 votes, then the decision of the Plan Commission will stand. Okay? Are there questions for staff on Item 19? Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if Attorney Haas or Director Stoudt could speak to the substantial evidence component of what we are required to do when considering conditional uses under state law, given the fact that this is a development proposal, and so any evidence would be hypothetical.
Attorney, Kate, Attorney Smith is here and can speak to that, I believe. Attorney Smith?
Yeah, good morning, or good evening, everyone. Can you tell that I usually do morning meetings? And also, yes, there are witch hats behind me, because it's now spooky season in my house, so we can all acknowledge that. So let's talk conditional uses and then we'll get to, and highlight the substantial evidence. So hopefully, in about four minutes, all of you will be prepared like Swifties are now prepared to talk about NFL, that you'll have it, you'll get it, and you'll be able to talk about it. So, as you know, in front of you is the appeal on a conditional use application for a club car wash. And what happened at the Plan Commission was they put it on file, which has the effect of that it will be, nothing can be done with it for a year, okay? So your decision is to either maintain that, or to overturn the decision of the Plan Commission. And when you overturn the decision of the Plan Commission, you will be granting the conditional use permit to the applicant. And that will come with, during your vote, if that's what ends up happening, it will come with conditions that the applicant has to meet, because as Alder Field said, this is a future development, right? Like, we're talking about something that doesn't exist yet. So when we think about the structure of conditional uses, you're guided by two things. First, the Wisconsin statutes, which Club Car Wash's attorney talked about, and what will lead into Alder Field's question about substantial evidence. And then, second, the Madison General Ordinances, and they interact with each other. And they interact with each other kind of in the following way. So in 2017, I think it was 2017 or 2018, the Wisconsin statutes, for the first time, put in conditional uses. Up till then, it was all decided over case law, but in 2017, the statute was created to put in when a city can and cannot approve a conditional use permit or a CUP, and then put a limit on local discretion. And what that means is not that there is no discretion, but that if an applicant meets or agrees to meet all the requirements and conditions specified in the ordinances or imposed by, in this case, the Plan Commissioner staff, the local government must grant the CUP. And I think when you initially hear that, you think that the CUP has to be granted, right? That it is this mandatory, if you fill in X, Y, Z, and sign at the dotted line, that we have to give you the CUP. And that's not exactly the case. There is a limit on discretion, but discretion still exists. And the cities are still allowed to create conditional uses, still have a process to discuss if their requirements are met in the ordinances, the conditions, but it does put, if you think about kind of the balance of approval, is more towards conditional use permits if the applicant is, you know, meets the conditions and has the complete application. And that makes sense, right? Like, if you're a local business or an individual and you want to do something that is conditional, you want to be able to know what rules you have to follow in order to have to, in order to get granted your conditional use. So it does put some sort, so, like I said, the balance is more towards granting the conditional use, but that doesn't mean that there's not discussion, that there's not discretion. And historically, most conditional uses, if there is a complete application, are granted. But again, I want to remind you that there is still a piece, a large role for the legislative process, and what the legislative process does is it discusses substantial evidence. And so the statute says that if the permit is approved or denied, it must be based on substantial evidence, which is defined in the statute. It means facts and information, other than merely personal preference or speculation, directly pertaining to the requirements and conditions an applicant must meet to obtain a conditional use permit, and that a reasonable person would accept in support of a conclusion. And this is kind of loosely what you would think about as evidence, right? Like, it talks about, it would be public testimony, written materials submitted by the applicant, the staff report. All of that is, is, provides facts and information by which you can base your decision. And so really, like, what the legislator is saying is that you can't just go off of vise. You have to come up with reasons why you're doing something. And a good way to think about that is, the city can't just say, this development would create traffic congestion, period, and that's why we're not granting the conditional use. But what you could say is, you could say, we know that, we believe it would create traffic congestion because of the comments by the city's traffic engineer, a traffic report that was conducted, the information in the staff report that's based off of traffic engineering's models of this area. So that's the type of thing that supports the assertions, right? You just back, you have to tie it into information that's presented to you, and a lot of really great information for any CUP is going to be found in the staff report, right? The staff report correlates all of the technical knowledge of staff throughout the city's departments, traffic engineering, water utility, all of the things, and it provides you information about if not, if the conditions are met. So even though there may not be, in this kind of hypothetical example, the traffic engineer might not be registered to comment, you can still look for that information in the materials that are presented to you, and then you link your conclusions to that. So now what we're going to do is very quickly tie that into our local ordinances, because what the statutes do not do is they don't provide you standards for how, when a conditional use should be granted or not. That's when you look to our local ordinances. And there are three places that you look. First, the general approval standards. This is for every single CUP that's going to come. They're listed in MGO 28.1836A, and they are more kind of broad policy decisions that the city has for development, right? They talk about some specifics, yes, like having a, like a water plant, but they also are much more, if you look at them, they're much more totally like policy, policy preferences of the city, right? How you want the development to, to go forward. What are the current uses and whether or not they would be impacted by, by the proposed condition? Those are for all the CUPs. So then, the next place that you're going to look are the supplemental regulations for the CUP. So when you see the C, and then it has, and you look in the chart, it has a Y for supplemental regulations, that means that specific to what you are currently discussing, there are supplemental regulations. So here, there are supplemental regulations for car washes, and you're going to find that in 28.151, but what you really want to do is look at the staff report, which is going to give you technical details about if they have met the conditions of the car wash. So the applicant is presenting to you that they can meet all of those conditions, right? That their proposed car wash is going to follow all of the, I don't know, there's maybe seven or eight, specific technical requirements for a car wash. But that, like I said, that doesn't mean that you cannot also examine the broader policy conditions that are applied for all conditional uses, what I talked about in the other section of the statute. And then finally, the piece that they have to follow in order to be granted a conditional use is the recommended conditions by the staff. And if you look at the staff report, you'll see that, starting on about page eight, there's page after page after page of specific conditions recommended by the staff. And what that allows is it allows continuing jurisdiction kind of over the conditional use, right? So they have to meet all of these specifics. Like Alder Field said, this doesn't exist yet. So this is going to provide a way to check in with the business to see if the conditions are met. And typically, what's going to happen is that the applicant here is going to attest that they will follow all of these conditions, right? That they agree to them, that they relate in a, they relate to what they're trying to do, they can do them, and all of that. So generally speaking, the meat of the discussion is going to be on the broader conditional use standards that are for all conditional uses. And you'll see in the staff report that, when they talk about those in more detail, they highlight, I think, four of them. Those are the ones that, when you, when, with the Plan Commission, or now, it's all of your responsibilities, when you base your decision to approve or deny, and you're talking about the reasons based in the conditional use standards, you'll want to tie that back to substantial evidence, as Alder Field said. So kind of those more specific, concrete facts or information that you can glean from this actual specific application.
No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Vediver?
Okay, so, since we were talking before about the other car washes in the area, I did look at Google Maps, and there is another car wash like two minutes away. But my assumption is, and this is the question, is that we cannot consider nearby businesses with similar uses when we're talking about this. Is that correct?
Attorney Smith?
Sorry, I wasn't sure if I could ask you something. Yes, I mean, the, I think that the market competition for surrounding businesses doesn't really fall under the existing enjoyment of existing uses, so I would, again, it's your policy decision to make, but I think that probably if that's the only reason, it's a little bit shaky.
Thank you. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Alder Rommel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my question's for Attorney Smith. And maybe you covered this and I was sort of spaced the moment where you mentioned how the comp plan weighs into our decision. Because in the staff report, if people look on page four, it does reference the intensity of use that's a goal of this area. And, you know, arguably, um, a car wash is not a very highly intensive use. And, um, and so I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, yes, you do need to consider the comp plan. Um, I think that in terms of whether or not a car wash is the type of intensive use that's drawn for, that, that is, um, what the comp plan calls for, um, I would probably defer the specifics of that question to planning staff since they will be able to, um, have a better conversation with you about why a car wash does or does not have the intensity of use.
Director Souter?
May I follow up just so, and then also Director Souter could answer? Um, so how do we, how would, um, anyone who thought this should be, um, granted, that we should, if we wanted to agree with the plan commission, how would you argue the comp plan as part of the deliberations? Thanks.
Director Souter? Yes, thank you, Alder Rommel, for that question. So I, I think it's important here to distinguish between the comprehensive plan, which is a, a long-range land use plan, um, you, you know, uh, not, not incredibly detailed. It doesn't come with a detailed list of uses that are allowed or not within the future land use, uh, recommended for a certain area. And the zoning code, which really clearly lays out what's allowable and what's not, and under what circumstances. And here in this district, the commercial corridor transitional district that also lies within the transit-oriented development overlay, the city does allow car wash as a use under certain circumstances. A, a car wash facility must be two stories in height within the transit-oriented development overlay. Uh, this one does meet that standard. And it must meet other design requirements of the TOD, Transit Oriented Development Overlay. And, um, as, as noted in the staff report, the, uh, the proposed car wash before the plan commission and before you this evening does meet the zoning standards. And I think the question that the plan commission grappled with and that you're really grappling with tonight is does the car wash and the, you know, the proposed site plan that they're bringing forward meet all of the conditional use standards within the zoning code, as, as Attorney Smith pointed out? Um, you know, the plan commission found that it, uh, did not meet two of those conditional use standards. And this was a rare case where staff had recommended approval, finding that the standards have been met, and the plan commission ultimately voted, uh, to place it on file. That's fine, that happens sometimes. And, and now it's in your, uh, court this evening to consider whether the plan commission made the correct decision based on the conditional use standards. So I would, I would urge you to focus on the zoning and the conditional use standards and, and not focus, uh, so closely on the comprehensive plan, which is a much more general document. Um, it's clear that car washes are allowed under our zoning code in the CCT district and in the transit-oriented development overlay more specifically. So I, I hope that that, that is clear. And, and really what, what you're grappling with tonight is, is whether the proposal meets the conditional use standards, um, as Attorney Smith mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Rommel. Um, Alder Latimer Burris?
Yeah, I guess this question is for, um, uh, um, our attorney is, um, I'm, I'm curious about the, um, discretion, I'm, I'm curious about the, the use of discretion. And, um, you know, how, could you give us like, um, what am I trying to say? How much discretion do they have? Like discretion is a legal term, uh, meaning, you know, they can, you know, decide on their own, and then what is that based on? And then my other question that goes along with that um, has to do with policy preferences under the MGO 28.1836A. Who determines, um, who determines that? And then who determines what that actually means? I hope I'm making sense, I think I am.
Okay, I, I think I understand your question, but please cut in if I'm not answering it. So, um, discretion is one of those lovely terms. It's not, um, I was going to say, is it like, there's not like a legal term here, right? And what I want you to think about when, when I say that you have discretion when it comes to the state statute is what the state statute does not do is it doesn't say that, um, we are taking away local control over conditional uses, right? We are saying, we are saying, um, that instead of allowing local control over conditional uses, that statewide, if a conditional use applicant is complete, is timely, and, um, is classified as a conditional use by a city, then it has to be approved. That's not what the state statute says. What the state statute says is take a look at the local ordinances, the local conditional use standards, and if an applicant meets those, um, then the, um, conditional use permit should be granted, okay? And the local ordinances, the local conditional use standards are voted on by all of you, right? Like way long ago, that a council passed the conditional use standards. You could pass less, right? Like we could be talking next month that you want to like, take away conditional use standards. But, but, um, what the discretion lies in is all of you now, because it's been appealed before it would have been planned commission, take a look at the, the terms, and some of them are really specific, right? Like, let's just take a look at conditional use approval standard two. The city's able to buy, provide municipal services to the property where the conditional use is proposed. Well, that's kind of a checkoff, right? Like, you know, we, we know from the staff report that we can provide municipal services to this, to this location. But the uses, values and enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already established will not be substantially impaired or diminished in any foreseeable manner. That's a decision that's ways, that is rested by all of you, right? That's up for you to decide here, or the plan commission, but not, but now all of you. So that is where we can't tell you the right answer. Because it is up to policymakers to make those determinations. Um, and the state statutes give the policymakers discretion in that regard. Does that make sense?
Alder Latimer Burris?
Okay, and then, uh, so when it goes to the plan commission, which, you know, we're in effect becoming the second tier plan commission, what guidance are they given? Uh, well, I'm curious to know how much time they spent on it. And then I'm, I'm, I'm like, what guidance are they given that supports, um, I mean, catch what you last said, I, you know, already went through my brain, but, uh, you know, you know, to kind of guide them on, we're looking at this, you know, this is our policy. I'm, I, yeah, so I'm trying to get at, where is it actually laid out? Like, you know, so the rules are like the same on, in one room as they are in another room. And, uh, you know, it's not dependent on environment or personality, or if they like car washes or they don't like car, car washes. Is what I'm getting at. Where do they, does the commission, do they have a, it, it internal administrative, uh, manual that they can reference, or?
Alder, Director Souter can answer that question.
All right.
Thank you so much, Alder Armani. I, let me share screen here and, and just bring up the conditional use approval standards again, uh, from the, uh, from the ordinance. So I, I want to be clear that for every conditional use that the plan commission considers, planning division staff authors a staff report, really walking them through, uh, you know, recommendations and adopted plans, and whether or not we think as staff that these approval standards are met. I'll show you the staff report in just a second, but I want to, uh, to show the council here that these two highlighted standards, standard number four and standard number seven were the two that the plan commission ultimately decided were not met when they voted to place this on file on August 28th. Now, um, I will bring up the, the staff report just as a reference to show, uh, the council um, an example of what the plan commissioners have and, and what's in Legistar uh, associated with every conditional use request. So here's our, our planning division staff report, uh, several pages in length where we walk through an analysis of whether or not a proposal meets the conditional use standards. And we make a recommendation, um, and I'll, I'll scroll to that here at the, the end of the meat of the report, uh, that basically provides a clear recommendation to the, the comment, or to the plan commission as to whether the conditional use should be approved. So as you can see here, the planning commission did recommend approval of the car wash on August 28th. But as I said earlier, this is one of the cases where the planning, or the plan commission made a different uh, decision than was recommended by staff. That does happen on occasion, and it's completely within the realm of the plan commission to make a judgment and come to a vote on whether or not they believe those conditional use standards were met. Um, we then go on, uh, as, as Kate Smith mentioned, uh, moments ago, to list many conditions of approval from various city agencies, ranging from planning, urban design, uh, city engineering, zoning and others. This particular, uh, this particular application has dozens of conditions of approval that if the council were to reverse the plan commission decision and approve the conditional use, all of these conditions would need to be met before the car wash would move forward. And so thi- this is just an example, and I, I flew through it, but I, I want to assure the council that the plan commission has a, a wealth of information and analysis from planning staff as they begin to deliberate on each and every conditional use request before them.
Um, can I just ask a follow-up question?
Go ahead, Alder.
Yeah, so, um, do this, does a planning commission have to report its judgment or its vote, do they have to do it with supporting evidence? Uh, you know, like you would have to do in, in, in the court of law? Um, um, and I'm asking that because I think that they're the final stop for, they're an authorizing agency or something like that. I'm forgetting what the term is, but they have authority. For example, Landmark, Landmark's commission, we can make a recommendation, but we don't have final authority.
Sure, so the, the plan commission and all of their decisions, um, does make a finding as to whether the relevant standards for approval have been met. And as, as I mentioned, in this particular case, the plan commission voted, um, you know, to place this on file, finding that standards four and seven, uh, were not met. And, and so that's, that's what we make sure that, that plan commissioners uh, state on the record, the, the standards, any, any standards that they feel are not, uh, being addressed by the conditional use application. Uh, in this case, the, yes, the plan commission is typically the final say on conditional uses, but, uh, we're in the midst of an appeal to the council uh, on the, the plan commission decision of August 28th.
Okay, so then I, if you don't mind, if I could just ask one follow-up question? Um, then what, where is it where they stated their, um, judgment of that, that, that the conditions weren't met other than the condition just not being met? Do you, you know, like the circular thing where it's like, okay, the conditions haven't been met, why not? Because I said that they haven't been met. And because, and then you repeat the same thing that, you know what I mean? That's there in the, uh, in the statute, or that's there in the report?
Sure, so, so.
Or policy preferences?
Sure, so this is again, a, a screen share of, uh, an excerpt of our City of Madison ordinance, which lists the conditional use approval standards. And the plan commission found that these two approval standards were not met. Number four, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normally orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. And, uh, number seven, um, that the conditional use, sorry, the conditional use conforms to applicable regulations of the district in which it's located. Those were the two standards that the plan commission could find, could not find or met with the application.
I guess I'm asking why? I, I still haven't heard why, just heard what it is, is the standard. And here's the, the language, uh, that we use to deny it, but I haven't heard the why, like, you know? But you would, like it's.
That question might be best, best answered by plan commission alders who were present that night, some of whom were involved in the, the motion. But, uh, on the record verbally, there was an explanation of why uh, the motion maker didn't feel that those standards had been, had been met.
Okay, maybe we can hear from the alders.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, questions for staff?
Oh, hi, yes, um, sorry, that was an accident.
Oh, okay, Alder Evers, questions for staff?
Uh, yeah, this is for Attorney Smith. Um, wouldn't it be necessary for us to confine our decision-making to standards four and seven? Whether or not substantial evidence had been provided by plan commission in making their vote? Shouldn't that not be what we're deciding tonight? Because the applicant or the appeal, appellate, or whatever the proper term is, I don't know what it is, but the, the, the car wash folks are claiming capricious and arbitrary ruling that they could actually sue regarding that if we do not provide subs, uh, a basis for su- supporting a substantial evidence claim, then isn't, I guess, again, as summary, shouldn't we confine our discussions to four and seven? And whether or not plan commission provided substantial evidence? Isn't that our job right now? Not these other items about, you know, do we like car washes? Is the market right for it? Four and seven, and did plan commission provide substantial evidence? Correct?
Um, well, so no, in this case, the club car wash is asking that you grant their conditional use approval.
No, I understand, I understand, but my question is, if we're, they're claiming that substantial evidence was not provided, and so shouldn't we answer that claim, whether or not that's the case?
Not really. So because you're now the decision-making body for the conditional use, it's fair game to look at all of the conditional use standards for whether or not it's met. What you're talking about is, um, when I have like the distinct honor and privilege of writing briefs about what all of you make decisions on in circuit court, then I focus on the, um, the specifics like that. But no, you get to make your decision now, so it's fine to talk about the different conditional use standards. Generally speaking, though, um, as you've kind of picked up and from the staff report and from the discussion, there's usually a couple ones that like really you can dig into. So it just so happens that those are, those are ones that will probably have a ro- more robust conversation with alders.
Well, so what you're saying, that though four and seven were raised by plan commission and, and voting against approval, we don't have to stick to that. We can, we could look at other conditional use standards. Right now, we are functioning as if we are plan commission and re-examining the entire project. Is, is that what you're suggesting?
Yep, it's a clean slate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue with questions, so. Um, the motion before us is to uphold the appeal. It does require 14 votes, is there a discussion? Alder Slack?
I, I just want to make absolutely clear, and then Alder Field has his hand up, but upholding the appeal means upholding what the planning commission decided?
No.
Okay, good, I'm glad I asked, okay.
So the motion before us is to, to uphold or to grant the appeal and to then grant the conditional use.
Got it.
Right, and, uh, it does require 14 votes. Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am home with COVID, so bear with me, everyone. Um, I am not going to support the appeal. And I'm going to talk through a little bit more about the discussion that we had in plan commission and the standards. I, I made the motion, um, in plan commission. So I'm going to recap some of what I discussed with commissioners in, uh, our August 28th meeting. Um, so our ordinance, as discussed with staff tonight, our ordinance. So as discussed with staff tonight, our ordinance is consider car washes to be a conditional use, and they're not just permitted by right in this area, so they need to prove that they meet each conditional use standard. The conditional use approval standards state that the Plan Commission shall not approve a conditional use without due consideration of the city's adopted plan, recommendations, design guidelines, supplemental regulations, and finding that all of the conditional use standards under MGO 281836 are met. As the applicant shared with us earlier tonight, the Plan Commission found that standards four and seven were not met. In that meeting and in staff's staff report for that meeting, the reports section on conformance with adopted plans says, "In regards to the use itself, staff does not believe the establishment of an auto-oriented use such as a car wash is the intensity of use that is encouraged by the adopted plans. The auto-oriented development itself is not believed to significantly complement or directly support transit in this area." And so that leads me to my discussion points on standards four and seven. So first, I found standard four unmet. It reads that "The establishment of the conditional use shall not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for the permitted uses in this district." The staff report notes that, quote, "The standard addresses the impact that a proposed conditional use could have on the development pattern or improvements of the surrounding properties and could be informed by specific aspects of the proposal." Staff went on to advise that the Commission should address whether the establishment of this conditional use would impede the development of normal and orderly development of surrounding properties, so neighboring properties, in a manner consistent with adopted plans. The applicant notes nearby in-process renovation for a hotel for housing as evidence that the car wash doesn't violate standard four, but that was approved last year and months before the application for a car wash was submitted. The Greater Easttown area plan adopted in 2022 repeatedly encourages improvements that support walkable, bikeable, and transit-oriented redevelopment. That plan classifies this and surrounding parcels nearby this site as community-mixed use in the generalized future land use map. The description in the comp plan supporting materials of community-mixed use is relatively high-intensity mix of residential, retail, office, institutional, and civic uses, generally located adjacent to a major transportation corridor with two-to-six-story building heights. So I find that standard four unmet because we have, I've kind of described what we are hoping to see in this area in the development plan for mixed uses and in particular housing, the city needs housing so badly. And by the definition of the service it would provide, a car wash here would bring more idling cars, according to the applicant, up to 50 at a time through this parcel while not supporting any other modes of transportation as called for in the plan. This area is intended to be for a mix of high-intensity uses, and it will become a less desirable location for the development of higher-intensity uses and housing in particular because of the idling cars coming through these two parcels. I want to note that the staff report from the August 28th meeting on this condition, number four, states that staff believe it is possible that the standard could be found met, but they do not recommend that it be found met. I also find standard seven met. The conditional use conforms to all applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. So we're talking about the transportation-oriented development overlay district here. So the text from the ordinance itself reads that the TOD is intended to provide increased mobility choices, improve pedestrian connections, traffic and parking connections, and foster high-quality buildings and public spaces that help create and sustain long-term economic viability. So I don't dispute that auto uses can be developed in the TOD, but I do dispute that auto-only uses in a building that supports, I'm sorry, I dispute the notion that auto-only uses in a building supports transit as stated and required in the TOD ordinance. The applicant's proposal does not show how a car wash here so close to a BRT stop, it's a block away from a BRT stop and a major investment by the city, supports the transit network. And so similarly here in the staff report, staff noted that, quote, "Staff believe it is possible for the Plan Commission to find the standard met, given the agency comments." And so on this question of substantial evidence, I am looking to the staff report and their suggestion that conditions could be found met, but not explicit recommendations that they would be found met. And also on the question of substantial evidence, I'm taking the comments by the applicants earlier tonight about the number of vehicles, idling vehicles queued up on this site and the impact of that on the desirability of development in nearby lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, thank you. It takes me a second, Mayor, to just click on this phone business. So I guess it sounds to me like, and correct me if I'm wrong, Derek, Alder Field, that you're trying to, you're saying that if it is not high-intensity, high-intensity, walkable, you know, connects to the BRT, it's not going to meet the standard? Because that's what it sounds like. And then, also, some of the points that you made, you know, as you were making them, I was thinking, you know, but are they illegal or are they contrary to the permitted use? And then, is, you know, are we limiting to the types of businesses that can go there because of the, you know, transit-oriented district overlay? So, because it sounds like it's kind of like a, you know, again, I hate to say this word, I say this every week, it's an Enron. It's like, it's a circular thing that, you know, it's easier to say, look, if you're not going to build a super-intensity, super-dense building, and if you're not going to make it walkable and connecting to the BRT, then we're going to get rid of it. So for example, there is a car wash that is, I'm on East Washington, there's a car wash there, and across the street is going to go a high-intensity, affordable housing facility. So under that standard, we would get rid of the car wash because it does not fit the goal of transit, of this building, this, you know, transit-oriented town and dense housing, intensity, density, it's all the same thing. I'm not against housing, totally for it, I'm just trying to be clear. Then we can say to people, unless you do a big building and it's how we want it and it goes with our plan, you know, you're out.
Thank you, Alder. I'd just like to remind the council to address your comments to the chair as opposed to each other. Alder Field.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just reiterate one of the points that I made that was, I think, relevant here. So on my finding about standard four, that is based on the impact of the activity at this site on the desirability for development of nearby sites. And so it's not that this use isn't, you know, tall enough or anything like that. It's the impact of 50 idling vehicles on the desirability of development so close to the BRT stop, a block away, where we are trying to encourage, you know, as many alternate modes as possible and take advantage of that major investment in transit.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other. Alder Slack.
Yeah, the only, thank you, Mayor, the only thing I would just add is, I mean, that's towards the end of the east-west BRT line, is my understanding. And there's quite a few blank spots on the map in terms of bus stops a little further out, and quite a few stops that have been removed. And so that's why, that's why when I was talking with the applicant, I was trying to keep an open mind and think, well, is there a win-win here? Because that's how I try to think. And I suggested a couple things that could be consistent with the transit-oriented development. And one is encouraging people to safely park their bike there and hop on the BRT, when the other alternative may just be to drive all the way in to downtown. So I just want to, I just want to say that I was impressed that the applicant was willing to think outside the box, and I kind of want to explore this further with them or give them a chance to, you know, solidify some ideas and let us hear about them. So I was wondering if I could make a motion to refer, just to give them a couple, you know, more weeks to flesh out what they would be able to do, if people are interested in hearing that.
Alder, it is possible, a motion referred is in order, but you can only refer it back to the council?
Yep.
And I don't, I'm not sure if one of the attorneys or Director Stoudt wants to comment on this, but they can't change their application at this point. So regardless of what they may say that they want to do or would do, you're still making a decision based on what was submitted to the Plan Commission and what the Plan Commission discussed. Because the question before you is the appeal of the Plan Commission's decision. So we wouldn't be able, I don't think, to get further materials from them other than what we've already heard in testimony.
So if that, if we wanted that conversation to happen, you would vote no? Or you'd vote, you'd vote, I don't know what you'd vote.
If, my suggestion, Alder, is that you would vote to grant the conditional use permit and encourage further conversations. I mean, and again, Director Stoudt, please weigh in and correct me if I'm wrong, but there's nothing that stops them from adding a bike rack to their site, right?
It's more than that, but yeah.
So they could, as long as they're within the regulations, they can adjust their proposal. They just can't move outside of the regulations. Director Stoudt, is that the correct interpretation?
That is the correct interpretation, and I guess I'll, I think what I'll say is this, that if the council want, if the council were to grant the appeal and overturn the Plan Commission's decision, the council does have the opportunity to add additional conditions this evening. And the conditions could read, the applicant is encouraged to provide bicycle parking for the public. You know, things like that could be added as conditions of approval by the council. And then we as staff, when we're waiting for those final plans to come in from the applicant team, those additional conditions of encouragement from the council will be there in front of us, and we'd be looking for those things. So it wouldn't be, oh, this is different, this is coming to us out of the blue. It would be, oh, this is why this is here. It's been encouraged by the council.
Does that address your question, Alder? Thank you, Alder. Alder Rummel.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Alder for his thorough explanation and obvious knowledge about all the conditional uses. I often dig into those conditional uses, so I think it's something that Alder should be prepared to think about. And, you know, if I were on the Plan Commission, I think I would have said that the proposal, well, you know, it could be done somewhere as a conditional use. In this location, I didn't, I don't think it would meet standard number three, which is the uses, values, and enjoyment. So if you're living in that new residential, supposedly 75 feet away, but not only would there be idling cars, but there'd be noises of up to 75 decibels, which may or may not directly impact you, depending on where you lived on the site, but just going outside, it would be something that would be part of your environment. I think also, number, standard number four, which is conforms to all applicable regulations of the district, is another where, and this is the one that really got me, so if you had a big parcel in front of a brand-new, reconfigured housing, would you think that a car wash is the best use to put in front of it? You know, aside from whether or not people use car washes, I just can't imagine why we would want to put a car wash in front of some new housing so close. And I think you even argue also that, and that was number seven, and I also think standard number five, nine, which is the sustained aesthetic desirability, is maybe harder to argue, but it's about the intended character of the area, which has, you know, been planned for with the redesign, you know, how do we revision Easttown? How will BRT help change this area? And I guess it just seems to me that putting in a car wash in front of a residential building in the TOD district doesn't meet the standard. So I am not going to support the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion before us is to grant the appeal and the conditional use permit. Just as a reminder, it does require 14 votes to pass. So all those in favor of granting the appeal and the conditional use permit will say aye. Those opposed, no, as their name is called, and the clerk will please, I'm sorry, Alder Bennett.
Just to be clear, like, a yes is yes car wash, a no is no car wash?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, so all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Madison. Alder Madison, no. Alder Martinez-Rutherford. Alder Martinez-Rutherford, no. Alder Miyazi. Alder Miyazi, no. Alder Rummel.
No.
Alder Rummel, no. Alder Slack. Alder Slack, aye. Alder Tischler. Alder Tischler, no. Alder Revere. Alder Revere, no. Alder Vitterer. Alder Vitterer, no. Aldo Hellias excused. Alder Bennett. Alder Bennett, no. Alder Conklin. Alder Conklin, no. Alder Curry. Alder Curry, no. Alder Duncan. Alder Duncan, no. Alder Evers. Alder Evers, no. Alder Field.
No.
Alder Field, no. Alder Figaro-Cole. Alder Figaro-Cole, no. Alder Govin-Rajan. Alder Govin-Rajan, no. Alder Harrington-McKinnney.
Aye.
Alder Harrington-McKinnney, aye. Alder Knox.
No.
Alder Knox, no. Aldo Latimer-Burris.
Aye.
Aldo Latimer-Burris, aye. We have three ayes, 16 noes.
With 16 noes, that motion fails, and we will go Alder Vitterer. Move to take a 10-minute recess, please. Is there a second? Moved in second to take a 10-minute recess. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we'll be back at 8:53. Good. All right, I will call the council meeting back to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Madison. Alder Madison is present. Aldo Martinez-Rutherford.
Bear.
Aldo Martinez-Rutherford is present. Alder Miyazi.
Present.
Alder Miyazi is present. Alder Rummel.
Present.
Rummel is present. Alder Slack. Alder Slack is present. Alder Tischler. Alder Tischler is present. Alder Revere.
Here.
Alder Revere is present. Alder Vitterer.
Here.
Alder Vitterer is present. Aldo Hellias excused. Alder Bennett. Thank you. Alder Bennett is present. Alder Conklin. Right back there. Alder Curry. Alder Curry is present. Alder Duncan.
Here.
Alder Duncan is present. Aldo Evers.
Here.
Evers is present. Alder Field.
Here.
Field is present. Aldo Figaro-Cole.
Here.
Figaro-Cole is here. Aldo Govin-Rajan. Govin-Rajan is here. Aldo Harrington-McKinnney.
Aye.
Aldo Harrington-McKinnney is present. Alder Knox. Alder Knox is present. Aldo Latimer-Burris.
Yeah.
Latimer-Burris is present. Madam Mayor of Quorum.
Thank you. All right, we are on item 44, which is Legistar 79504, repealing sections of the Madison General Ordinances and amending other sections regarding trespassing. And President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to adopt the alternate.
Substitute.
Substitute.
Moved in second to adopt the substitute. There are questions for staff on item 44. Alder Slack.
Another is limitations on how public parking facilities can be used, and another is limitations on how buses can be used. Can you speak to whether those ordinances effectively prevent people from sleeping in those locations?
I'd have to look at the language, but if it prohibits them from being on the property, prohibits them from being on the property for any reason.
That's how I beat them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tischler.
Yeah. Yeah, I pulled this item from the consent agenda because this is something I wanted us to have a chance to discuss. You know, I do applaud, you know, the Alders who...
Sorry, Alder, is there, do you have questions?
I do. I'm getting...
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm glad we're raising awareness. I've been wrestling with this question. I have a question if Madison, someone from the Madison Police Department is present.
Yes, Alder, we have Assistant Chief John Patterson here.
Okay. Yeah. In reading this, I have a couple of questions. I'll just ask them both, and you can decide to answer in any order. You know, with section 6A, it uses a language without the permission of the person on the premise. If we remove section 6, section 6A, the language will then be, permission changes from after having been notified. This puts, seems to put responsibility on the property owner, and if you could speak to that. My second question is, I did go back and I reviewed the City County Homeless Issues Committee from September 18th. I listened closely to Lieutenant Justine Harris address the issue of how many times section 6A had been used. In her response, she said, "Three of the four times really had nothing to do with homeless." Now, given the amount of times we have, the Madison Police have used trespassing, you know, I guess my question is, you know, why, why would Madison Public, why would Madison Police Department want to keep this ordinance on the books? When, I guess, it's not being, is not being used against homeless or unsheltered? Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it, Alder. I'll do my best to try to respond, and I'm going to change my view because I'm staring straight at myself right now, and it's disturbing. So if I understand this correctly, this ordinance was enacted or this language was adopted back in 1994, and all that predates my career by four years, so it's been around since I started in 98, but I don't know why it was added. I don't know the history behind it. But, you know, when I looked back at the last few years, I looked at 2018 to 2023, I think scope is important in the discussion, which is why I raised this. So in that time period, so from about August of 2023, starting in January 1st to 2018, we had 3,200 enforcement actions of this ordinance of 23.07. And the overwhelming majority were in subsection 1, which is someone trespassing to your dwelling, and subsection 2, which is your property or a building of another person. And subsection 2 and 1 both obviously have notification requirements. Now, 6 is specific to the act of sleeping. And just my personal experience, well, maybe, let me back up. I'll talk just about that time period that I looked at. There was, there was only merely a handful of those times where that was enforced, and I think, to your point, Lieutenant Harris talked at the previous discussion, I think it was two of those instances were for individuals that had overconsumed alcohol and perhaps were confused as to where they were, and they were sleeping on someone else's property. And the other one had to do with a runaway situation. The fourth one, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, was issued incorrectly by the officer. So that one should have been a subsection 2 citation, and I believe it was amended by the city attorney's office or perhaps the municipal court once it got to that point. So it's not utilized a lot. I think it's utilized morsel by officers, or it's not utilized a lot as, as far as an enforcement or in a citation. I think it's probably more utilized as a deterrent and as a reason to contact individuals who an officer may know through working their beat. For example, I was, at one point, the Lanin Street neighborhood officer. I knew all the property owners, I knew all of the, for the most part, I knew all of the people that owned certain dwellings or certain buildings around that area. And so I knew, you know, generally, who, if I found someone sleeping on a porch, who may live there and who may not. And so that's, that for me was a reason to contact someone. Now, when you look at 3,200 enforcement efforts, I mean, it tells me two things. I think the community is calling us for trespass, clearly. Our officers are proactively enforcing trespass on their own, and, you know, if subsection 6 were to go away, I think it's important, again, the overwhelming majority were subsection 1 and subsection 2. So I don't foresee, you know, us, for example, being unable to respond to a trespass complaint of someone doing whatever activity on anyone's property. What it'll force us to do is to take additional steps, but investigative steps. So asking the individual, do you live here? Do you have permission to be here? Do you have permission to sleep here? Do you have permission to do whatever other activity might be transpiring on the property? But that has to happen right now with the language as well. If I were to approach someone who I think doesn't belong on a particular private property, they're sleeping, and I, you know, rouse them, and they say, well, yes, I do have permission to sleep here, I would then still have to take investigative steps to verify that. Now, if they say, no, I don't, you know, enforcement would be an option. But I think the vast majority of occurrences, our staff are taking those additional steps, we're training them to take those additional steps, to reach out to property owners and look for other outcomes for individuals who, you know, are at that point where they have to sleep on someone else's property or any other property other than a dwelling. Hopefully, I addressed your question, so I can circle back to anything if I did not.
Alder Tischler.
Yeah, just clarification on the first one, that with the language, with the permission of the person on the premise, and then, and then removing 6A, it's after, have been notified. I think you did answer that. I just wanted to just make sure I'm understanding this correctly. It's just that this will be, this will be requiring property owners to post or to notify rather than going in. People know that this is not something they, they should be doing. Is that correct?
It's correct, and the, you know, it's important, though, over the years, I think, and Attorney Haas can certainly speak to this as well, but I think that the municipal court has accepted that a Madison police officer or responding police officer to a complaint of trespass as an authorized agent. So the property owner can call the Madison Police Department and say, you know, there's somebody sitting or dancing or sleeping on my property, whatever the activity is, someone's on my property that shouldn't be there, I would like the police to come and address this. The police officer can convey that notice to the individual and say, you're not allowed to be here, we've received a complaint, you need to leave. And if the behavior doesn't cease or they don't immediately leave, obviously enforcement becomes an option. So hopefully, that addresses it.
Yeah, you did. It's just, it's just the, it's just the language, the person on premise. So if somebody is not on premise, then they do not have permission, is how I understand 6A. So I'm just trying to be clear as I understand, understand, you know, the language here, and then what will happen once that's, that's removed. Okay.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
Alder Figaro Cole, questions?
I'll start with Attorney Haas real quick, or John can answer, but maybe Attorney Haas. So I hear these concerns about the Castle Doctrine, and I have to admit, it wasn't something in my knowledge base, so I have to be forced to understand it, which I'm grateful for that, I guess. Can you, and it's been, it's been used on social media apparently to, people have given definitions that are not, that are not accurate. Could you please define for the public and for the rest of the council, what are the conditions needed under the, under the Castle Doctrine as part of the statute?
Alder, I'm just going to pull up an email here from sort of a brief explanation of it.
Thank you.
So I don't mistake it. First of all, the Castle Doctrine and its use in Wisconsin, in my opinion, would not change regardless of whether this...
Correct.
...ordinance is implemented. But the Castle Doctrine essentially provides a presumption of reasonableness if people use force to, to defend their property from an intruder. It's, it's not, it doesn't mean that somebody cannot be liable if they use force, but there's a legal presumption starting out that that was reasonable use of force. So I guess that would be my brief explanation of the Castle. You know, as far as trespassers, I mean, just hearing some of the statements and some of the questions I've received or our offices received, if people want to take the law into their own hands, they will then deal with the consequences. But again, that, in my opinion, that does not change whether or not this ordinance is amended. And, I mean, in fact, I've told many of you this, in my legal opinion, I don't think the enforcement options of the police or the prosecution options of our office will change at all if subsection 6 is repealed, because as the Assistant Chief said, it's only been used, I believe, four times in the last four and a half or five years, and compared to many more times where subsections 1 and 2 have been used. And it actually gives us another element we have to prove in court. There's been a lot of focus on how the police would enforce it, but we deal with the citations if they go to court. I'm getting a little bit off your question, but subsection 2 only requires us to prove that the, an individual is on the property, doesn't require us to prove that they were doing any specific activity, whether it was sleeping, smoking, drinking, dancing. Subsection 6 requires us to prove that they were sleeping. And as the Assistant Chief said, I don't believe there's really much any difference between without permission in subsection 6 and after notification in subsection 2. As Assistant Chief Patterson said, there would still be investigation required to confirm that the person did not have permission. And also, if we were in court prosecuting somebody under subsection 6, because we thought they were sleeping, and they testified that they were not sleeping, and that they actually heard all the conversation around them, we've lost our case because we cannot prove that they were actually sleeping, rather than simply having a subsection, a citation under subsection 2, which does not require us to prove any specific activity. So, sorry, I went off of your question, but I just wanted to sort of lay out what our analysis of the impact would be.
So again, to confirm, I think, one of the questions from my colleague about who is the burner of proof about who makes the call, in either case, on these ordinances, the property owner has to be consenting to the police taking action against somebody. Isn't that accurate?
Right.
Doesn't matter what they're doing, if they're sleeping or they're dancing, if they're selling Girl's Call cookies. If I don't want them on my property and I don't want to tell them, I can tell them myself, or I can call MPD and say, you cannot be on my property. I don't care, again, what the actions that they're doing might be. It's just that, that connection or that interaction with MPD and the owner still happens regardless of the sections on the trespassing ordinance.
I believe that. Those are the options today, and those would be the options if this ordinance amendment passed.
I don't have any question, any other questions at this time.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, questions for staff?
Yes. Thank you so much. But, so, so just to be clear, I think Attorney Haas, right now, trespassing is illegal, and it still will be with this ordinance change, right?
Correct.
Okay. And question for JP?
Assistant Chief Patterson.
Assistant Chief Patterson, sorry. Thank you. I understand you told us about your procedures, you know, if you have, if there is a call to service, you respond and act accordingly. What, if any, change would happen following this ordinance to how you are currently operating?
Yeah, operationally, Alder, thank you for the question. Operationally, we would not make any major changes. Obviously, we would notify staff that subsection 6A and B were no longer included in the ordinance. But we would still take, you know, the same training and same investigative steps as we do now for the trespass ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. And then, as you noted, there are thousands of calls to service currently for this trespass ordinance. Does that indicate to you that this, that ordinance as written is a good deterrent for trespassing, or do you think that there are other things on the hierarchy and needs of people that are trespassing that, like, limit them from seeing an ordinance or, you know, seeing it as a deterrent?
I, I think it's definitely a deterrent. You know, there, every side of town and every neighborhood is so different. And, you know, when we talked last week with the city attorney's office and Aldo Figaro Cole, I mean, there's a lot that can go into the notification of a residence that has, you know, a dozen units compared to a single-family dwelling. And so it's certainly a deterrent. I don't know if I am qualified to say it's a good deterrent, it's a deterrent in a list of things that we can all try to do to sort of mitigate that behavior.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, questions?
Yeah, for Assistant Chief Patterson.
Go ahead.
So I do have a question, but I know you suggested that, there was a suggestion made, I've been hearing this over and over again, about that the MPD doesn't enforce this, this ordinance. And I think you clarified that certainly they do enforce, mostly in, you know, the former cases, but you do do enforcement. So my question is, what's your position on, on the enforcement in particular? What is it that you tell your officers to do when you encounter trespassers? Can you be a little more specific on that? Because I've been hearing suggestions that, well, I can give you a context, but, you know, I work at the Overture, so I just want you to kind of relay, what is it that you instruct your officers to do when they encounter someone trespassing?
No, thank you for the question, Alder. You know, an example of our pre-service academy, our new officers all get training on ordinance enforcement. And, you know, they're, they're taught to go through and examine each element of the ordinance when making an enforcement decision. That involves investigating each, each element. So in this case, if I am sent to a complaint of trespass, or better yet, if I am just on routine foot patrol in a neighborhood and I see someone that I think perhaps does not belong in the backyard, let's say, of a particular home... in the backyard, let's say, of a particular home, the officer or I, in this instance, would have to contact the property owner, verify that they don't belong, and ensure that they haven't been notified previously. Because if they had, they, you know, would perhaps get a ticket rather than just being told to leave. So we have to make sure that each element is present. But we like to try to send cases to Attorney Haas's office that don't require him to do additional work prior to court. So we try to be as thorough as possible and ensure that the property owner is always engaged.
Is it the same for private businesses as for residential property owners?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to get a context on that. I'll have some other comments in discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze, questions?
Yeah, I just wanted, is Jim O'Keefe available?
I don't believe we have anyone from community development here, sorry.
I guess I'll address my question to Patterson, Assistant Chief.
Go ahead.
One thing I was trying to get at was trying to, have you visited the homeless shelter that was on First Street?
Yes.
Okay. I was trying to get at the fact that the homeless shelter had a specific place for people with PTSD. I don't know if you saw that within the homeless shelter.
I can't say I recall seeing that specifically, but I recall hearing that.
Okay. And I was wondering if you can touch on the fact that when you go to residents sometimes, is it a fact that you might see a resident suffering from PTSD which might not want other people on their property?
That is, that's certainly possible, Alder, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole, additional questions?
Yes, my last round here. This is for MPD. So in the case, in the cases of a situation that you encounter someone in the property, sleeping or not, and you, and the homeowner is not home, and you're trying, you don't have their immediate consent, you ask the person, "Are you allowed to be here?" Chances are, you know, if they're not, do something bad or whatever, whatever, regardless, they're going to say, "Yes, I am allowed to be here." Are you, do you take their word for it? Or how do you, how do you balance that?
Well, you know, each circumstance is different, but officers obviously can look back at past calls for service to see if there isn't a history of trespass problems at that particular location. Obviously, they'll talk with neighbors. They'll talk with people that are in the vicinity to see if this individual does in fact have permission to be there. So there's always, you know, depending on the location, depending on the time of day, there's always options that officers have to try to be as thorough as possible and make a good decision.
So that's the standard operating procedures that you do today? Doesn't add anything, removing this doesn't add any extra work for you? You still have to investigate if the person claims that they have permission? It's not for, the ordinance doesn't state it is their proof of, they have to prove that they're there. They just, they can lie to you and you still have to investigate?
No, that's right. I mean, that's kind of why I wanted to bring up the scope of the number of citations that have in fact been written. Because I think it shows that officers are fairly well-versed in exploring whether or not notification has been made or if there's an issue ongoing at that particular location. You know, without diving into all 3,200, there could be a whole host of behaviors that were occurring prior to the officer arriving to the address where the ticket was written and then talking to the individual, talking to the property owner, writing the ticket. You know, I would suspect some of these probably were for sleeping or for other behaviors, but I don't know that without diving in. I mean, I think individual officers are going to have to go through the steps that, you know, that they're trained in and that clearly they are well-versed in.
And lastly, I spoke with another officer, and he gave me a different example to explain to me how the process of writing a ticket is, how are officers trained on writing that ticket? Like you said earlier, making sure you have enough information therefore the Attorney Haas not to have to do extra work. But the example that he provided was about driving a car. So if I, if someone takes my car and drives my car with or without my consent, and that person is driving down the street and you stop them for speeding, they pull the registration and their name is not, doesn't match their driver license, do you ticket them or arrest them for not, for driving someone else's car? If, you know, just a question. Do you arrest them for, do you take any action because they're not driving their own car? In addition to the speeding ticket?
Well, I mean, the officer may ask, you know, if there is a concern that the car doesn't belong to that individual. They may, they may take additional investigative steps, but that's not a citation or something that immediately just occurs.
So unless I report that car stolen, you wouldn't know, you didn't know that I didn't give consent to get that car? So you're not just going to prevent that person from driving my car?
Or if, yeah, stolen or if you say that they don't have permission to be in the vehicle. I mean, that's, I think Subsection 11 is, it deals with actually entering an automobile without permission, so.
Correct. But you, I will have to make that claim to you, or you have to contact me. Again, there's always, in almost every processes, every procedure that you manage, there's always a connection between MPD and the owner or the person in charge of whatever you're addressing at the moment.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze, additional questions?
No, it was kind of answered, but I guess I can throw one more question out there. So, again, to Patterson again. If you mentioned investigation, can you just touch on the fact that won't there be more investigations to investigate an issue where somebody is trespassing rather than this being implemented? And so don't you anticipate more investigation going on?
You know, just given the look that we took back in the last five and a half years, I don't think it's going to make a big change to how we're conducting business currently with responding to trespass complaints.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, additional questions?
Yeah, I just have a clarification. Assistant Chief, you said there were 3,200 enforcement. What, does that mean actual citations?
Yeah, I should have been more descriptive, Alder, my apologies. Approximately 3,200 tickets have been written over that 2018 to about August of 2023 time period.
So then can I assume that there were many more encounters or contacts, whatever you would call them, where there was not a citation issue? Maybe the officer told them to move along? Is that?
It's very possible, absolutely. Those are a little harder to quantify. You know, I'd have to take a dive into certain call types or incident types and then do a comparison to the numbers of citations and see perhaps how many, you know, verbal warnings or what have you were made.
So is it typical for an officer in that case to document that in some way? Like maybe in their log or put it in their report, even though they didn't issue a citation?
It would be either be in a police report or in the incident call notes through their mobile computer.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue for questions. So the motion is to adopt the substitute. Is there discussion? Alder Slack?
So I think really the central issue here is whether this section acts as a deterrent or not. Because if it does, we don't actually know what will happen when it does become legal to fall asleep on someone's property. You know, I have, you know, I've been getting lots of emails and phone calls from people with very legitimate concerns about when you don't require advanced permission and it becomes legal to sleep on someone's property without their permission, an activity that typically occurs at night. You know, you have scenarios where you might have a young kid leaving the house before anyone else in the morning, that you force the encounter. And that's what can be unsafe for people. And I don't think we should do this straw man's argument where, you know, if people are concerned about this repeal, then they're all awful people. You know, there are some legitimate concerns being raised here. And I happen to think that there are many that are legitimate and that we should be listening to. I also think it's a bit hypocritical that we have city ordinances that prevent sleeping in city, on city property. And somehow, you know, this now becomes the jurisdiction of property owners to take care of that scenario. It's, you know, so, and it's already legal to invite someone to sleep on your property. Anyone can do that. But let people have the choice to decide if they're in a position to do that. If they've been victimized in the past, you know, if they have safety concerns. We owe it to our constituents to listen to them. They're not just, we're not, you know, having a problem with repealing this ordinance is not, it's not people being bad people. It's just having a reasonable expectation that you can manage and have some control over safety on your own property. It is different than the trespass ordinance, which only, you know, what can happen during the day? It can happen anytime. Sleeping is something that can happen at night, in the dark, when people come home alone late, when they get up early alone. There's just so many unintended consequences here. And I think we need to care about the people that raise these legitimate concerns, too. It is possible to be both compassionate and provide resources and think of lots more ways to help people who are unhoused in this city and care about the safety of the rest of our residents here. I don't know why we can't do both. And I'm just kind of, I mean, I guess we'll just test this out. And every, you know, it'll just be a city that tests it out. I think you're going to have a lot of really upset and angry residents and constituents if this is repealed. Because I think there's better ways to figure out how to create warm, safe spaces at night for people to sleep than forcing private property owners to not have that choice.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah. Mayor, there's no, one of the things that I do on a very small, part-time basis is work for the Overture Center. And I would tell you, the facts are, there are people, and we all know there are homeless people, and their intent is to sleep on private property. That is a fact. Okay? Now, up until recently, we would be instructed to call the police, who would have them move off of the private property onto the easement next to the sidewalk, which is public property. Okay? But the fact of the matter is, we spent a lot of time, money, and energy to manage that situation that's across the street from the public library, which we probably allow, we allowed a little more flexibility with. But it is an issue, not to mention the residential properties. And I had an experience recently, about a month ago, where one of the vacant properties, I know who the owner is, there was a tent pitched there. And I actually called the property owner and asked him, was he aware that there was someone camping on his property? And he was not aware of that. Now, I don't think this person was causing any safety issue or anything like that. But the fact of the matter is, I think the current ordinance addresses specifically people sleeping, their intent is to sleep, on private property. So why would we eliminate that? It's pretty particular. It's responding to a particular issue. We know the whole downtown area. We even created ordinance to prevent that in certain areas of the city. So I think this is a public safety issue. I think we need to take it seriously. I understand people feeling like certain people are being targeted, but as we found out from the testimony today, the police are enforcing those things. And citizens are calling about these issues. And they are concerned about these situations. And so I think it is tough to leave it to the residents or the property owners to enforce it. So we have to rely on our law enforcement to do it. So give them some tools so they can effectively keep the peace and try, and they all do their due diligence of investigation. Most of the time, I'm pretty sure they're not ticketing people. They're just telling them to move it along to an appropriate place. And I think that's fine, you know. But there are some safety concerns, not only for individual residents, but there are concerns for patrons of businesses. And the last thing a business owner wants is somebody camping out, sleeping outside their building, making their customers feel uncomfortable. Regardless of how you feel about that, that is true. And that's a fact. I've walked many people to the parking lot because they weren't feeling comfortable about weighing through an area of people who are around that they don't know. And that's true. It may not be right, but it's true. So just kind of wanted to, you know, I don't see where these changes, I mean, sometimes, well enough, leave well enough alone and let it work. I agree with eliminating the fines, but I don't think that many people are getting fined, to be honest. But I don't know that, so.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I listened to Assistant Chief Patterson, who says that if Section 6 is removed, very little is going to change. I hear our city attorneys saying that Section 6, if removed, does not change the ability for municipal court to prosecute trespassing cases, of which we know that there are many. I don't believe, and if you do, then I would ask you, just ask yourself, how do we really believe unhoused or homeless individuals are not sleeping on people's lawns because of Section 6? Are they aware of this? And that's the reason why it's not happening? That's ludicrous. The idea if we remove this, it's going to be a floodgate of people sleeping on somebody's lawn? What this has done is it's created the fear reaction on Nextdoor and on listservs, where people are all stirred up. Now, part of me just wishes the order from the 10th wouldn't have done this because it's not going, it doesn't change things either way. And it just riles people up unnecessarily. But it speaks to the fear that people have in our community about the unhoused and the homeless. And that's a broader concern. Now, we can clean up the ordinance, we can clean up the language, we can talk about people being unhoused instead of being homeless, but we won't solve the homeless problem in our community. But removing Section 6 is not going to change anything. We're not going to have, the hyperbole of people, of Mr. Richmond saying, "Without a doubt, everybody is going to start sleeping on people's lawns." That's just not going to happen, folks. And if there's redundancy and it's important to clean up the ordinance, I'm okay with that. I'm okay if we don't do it. But the hyperbole has got, and I think there's a hyperbole on the other side. I don't think homeless people are being targeted to- I don't think homeless people are being targeted to Section 6. In my youth, in my childhood, my teenage years, I would parrise, like some of you maybe did, and one time I slept on, on a neighbor's boat. I wasn't homeless, I was drunk, I was wasted. That's why it appears like sometimes Section 6 is being used now, but if Section 6 weren't there, they could use Section 2. Getting rid of Section 6 does not prevent the police from enforcing our laws regarding trespassing. It simply cleans up the ordinance. But what this does is it reveals fear and anxiety in our community about unhoused individuals, and that, I think, is something that we have to acknowledge. The hyperbole on Nextdoor is unsettling to me. I'm, I really find it unsettling, but I don't want to rile up our residents. They do have fears. A lot of our residents have fears, but they're not realistic. There aren't going to be hordes of unhoused individuals camping out on people's lawns if we remove Section 6. And the same thing still needs to apply, that if someone does sleep on somebody's lawn and they're not supposed to be there, you would call the police, whether Section 6 is in there or, or not. That doesn't change. Nobody, the, the idea that somehow that's preventing that from happening, that people are saying, oh, I don't have permission to sleep on that person's lawn, so I'm not going to do it, that's not the way people think. I, I just think it's okay for us to clean up the ordinance if we need to, it's okay for us to address language and things like that. Not much is going to change either way, but it certainly is illuminating to me that we have these anxiety issues in our community about unhoused and poor individuals who are struggling, about which this ordinance has rarely been enforced. I think it just, that's to me interesting. I'm going to vote for the repeal, but I won't, it's not, it's not going to change either way. I'm just telling you now. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Herring McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Repealing this ordinance does nothing to address the underlying problems of homelessness. That's exactly what my colleague so elaborately just spoke. What are we trying to fix? And why are we trying to fix it? What is the purpose? Sleeping on people's property is trespassing, yes. In the September 18 City Council Homeless Issues Committee meeting, the MPD officer cited four people under Section 6 in the past five years, and none of them were homeless. Then what is the ordinance designed to fix? The MPD officer, representative on the Homeless Issues Committee, opposed this ordinance. I am addressing the unintended consequences. Threats of using the castle doctrine when a homeowner feels that they have the right to legally defend their property, the reasonable use of force. No citations from this section of the ordinance have been issued in the past 10 years. The co-chair of the Homeless Issues Committee abstained from the vote. The co-chair, one of the co-chairs, is a person with lived experiences of being homeless. He was more concerned about the fines. The police representative on the committee voted no. One of the co-chairs with the lived experience abstained, but others on the committee felt that they knew the best for this population. 10 years, no citations. Five years, four citations. Issue two for alcohol while trespassing, two violations of a posted sign. No citations, no jail times, no municipal funds. What are we trying to fix? Prior to the repealing of the ordinance, an update of the purpose, prior to the, the repeal of the ordinance, there was an update of the purpose-built men's shelter development, given by Jonathan Evans of the Engineering and Lynette Rhodes Community Development. A $21 million capital investment by the city, county, and federal government, plus another $2 million from the mayor's budget, moving homeless men out of the basements of downtown churches pre-COVID. That's what we should be focusing on. A 24/7 purpose-built shelter for men. That is what we're working to, and that is what we're committed to fix. Finally, unintended consequences must be considered. At 4:00 AM, it was stated, we have fewer police officers on duty. Response time is reduced. With 13 to 15 police officers in the entire city at 4:00 AM, if there is an incident involving trespassing that happens on the far east side, when MPD is unable to respond because of another incident on the far west side, active, causing the MPD to activate mutual aid, repealing the section outlined in the ordinance causes, does not fix, community safety and well-being. Rather than repealing the ordinance, what about addressing the issues of the fines? For this reason, I will not be supporting the repeal. And finally, in the last statement, I was at a community meeting last night, and the residents that were at, at that community meeting complained that they are not, not heard, and the developer was in the room, and they made suggestions, and the, the constituents felt listened to. That is one of the things that I want to put forward and why I'm not supporting this, is residents feel that they are not listened to. I have not been at a public meeting where a developer was applauded at the very end. We left that meeting with a partnership, the developer working with the members of the community, working with the Alders. I believe that it's going to be a model for the city in developing and building diverse housing. And so with that, I say and I ask, you know, is the repeal of this ordinance going to make a, a significant difference? As the Alder said, probably not, but it will go a long way for the public well-being and the feeling of safety. And for that, I am not going to support this repeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govinderajan?
Thank you. I think throughout this whole conversation that happened today in this room, and then all the emails we've been getting, I've been really disappointed, I think, because we, I feel like us Alders and this council have failed a lot of people. And that is because our job is not only to listen to our constituents, but also educate them on what's going on. We, as Alders, have resources that not every citizen in this town have. We have access to some of the best attorneys in the city. We have access to people who know how the law works, and it is our job to talk to them and then share that message to our constituents. So there is a lot of miscommunication going on here. Sleeping will still remain illegal, because in order to sleep on someone else's private property, you need to trespass on it, and if you are trespassing, that will remain illegal. So therefore, you cannot sleep on someone else's private property, just like you can't have a dance party, or go drink, or something else, because if you are trespassing in order to do any activity, that is illegal, and that is an ordinance that will still remain in place here. And it is our job as Alders to educate our constituents on that. So then there's this whole different question of, is this a deterrent? Give me one single law in the entire country that deters people from sleeping. You will not be able to do it, because there is not an effective law, ordinance law at the city level or anything that deters people from sleeping. If people want to sleep, if people need to sleep, they will sleep, whether it's on someone's grass, on their lawn, or on a sidewalk that's two feet away from it. Would you rather someone sleep on the road at 2:00 AM where it's dark with no streetlights? Or would you rather some human, human sleep on someone's lawn? That is the question we're kind of asking here. Would you rather, and also, this whole safety issue, yes, you might have someone come in late from work, and there might be someone sleeping on your lawn. When was the last time you read a news story about a sleeping person attacking you? Because I haven't ever read that, because that doesn't happen when you're asleep, you don't get attacked. There is no safety issue if someone is asleep. These people do not want to attack you, they do not really want to cause you harm, they want to sleep. Okay? And it is our job as Alders to educate this, educate our, our constituents. So this is a very disappointing conversation to have right now. There is no practical effect of this, but at the very end, if this prevents one single person from being cited, cited twice, and rather they get cited just for trespassing, rather than trespassing and sleeping, then, and it saves them one citation, one charge, a couple bucks, I'm happy for that. So I will be voting in, in favor of this repeal, and I really, really want to see us as Alders take more charge and educate our constituents, because that is part of our job. We do more than just listening. We have to use the platform we have. Thank you.
You, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Thank you. I want to start this off by saying that I can understand how, to some people, this ordinance change is scary. The thought of someone coming to your home, or your property or whatever, and sleeping on it, using it, dancing on it, selling Girl Scout cookies on it, can be scary to a lot of people with strangers. I am frustrated, however, how instead of responding to some of these legitimate fears with information, some of my colleagues have chosen to respond with more fear mongering. Those that have expressed opposition to this ordinance refuse, or most of them refuse, at least, to acknowledge that this ordinance does not change the way MPD responds to these calls, or how they will, what will happen with these calls. There's misinformation about who, how, how much people will start trespassing because of this ordinance, that the police will no longer be able to do anything about it, all of which is not true. And quite frankly, I believe that misinformation is even more dangerous than this ordinance. It is, this ordinance itself is not an effective deterrent, and residents are well-protected. So I agree that if we actually want to solve this issue, then we need to radically invest in homelessness issues and not push it off till later. I recognize, too, that this is the same body that pushed the men's homeless shelter back a full year. This is the same body that strongly opposed the Dairy Drive temporary encampment and the Rynall Park encampment. This is the same city that proclaims homelessness as a protected class, which only extends to which those issues do not impact oneself. This is the same city in which many homeowners have, in this house, we believe, no human is illegal, and love is love, and kindness is everything, except if you're on my property. So this ordinance change may not necessarily have much of a change on what happens, but I think is important to remove ordinances that make homelessness, like criminalize homelessness. And again, I find it sad that we think that just because someone has emailed into us means that we need to ignore every other voice that isn't emailing us. How homeless people are residents, too. During the campaign, I knocked on every single door in my district that I could, including the many homeless shelters in my district, and many of whom are just down on their luck and, or just experiencing mental health issues or anything of the like, that Madison Police Department is well-aware of and has, and deals with constantly. So the voices that aren't here are the ones that I'm listening to today, and I'm not going to feed in to all of this fear mongering and misinformation that is so harmful to anything that is regarding homelessness issues.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Slack for the second time?
Yeah, I just, Mayor, thank you. I don't get the sense from the people writing me that they're talking about a concern about people who are unhoused being on their property. It's, it's the, it's the worry about a stranger being on their property and, and not having a chance to, to have, to give that permission ahead of time. And you don't know what people in this city do to help others. You're making some big assumptions that the, the people calling in and expressing concerns haven't done things to help people who are unhoused, invited them to live in their home even. You don't know that either. I mean, we're making a lot of assumptions about people's intent and about the, their character, and there's certainly some people talking in awful ways about people who are unhoused. But this is what, this is a lazy argument, to take those instances and blanket them over everyone who has a concern. Again, we'll see, you know, if it's, I think most people don't realize that they're even, they don't, they don't realize that, they assume this is a law, that you can't just go sleep on someone's property. So now that we've made a, a big deal about it from both sides of this position, people will surely know that now, so we'll see. My question is, Mayor, this is one of your signature issues. What is your position on this? Because I do think the public deserves to know that.
Thank you, Alder. We're not really in questions anymore, but I think it's been pretty amply suggested by staff from multiple different departments that regardless of what way the vote goes tonight, things are not really going to change. So I don't have a strong feeling about it.
Alder Miazze?
Yes. Well, a lot of things were said tonight, but I want to definitely address some things that were said. I believe they're incorrect. When I voted against the Rynall Park encampment, it was basically because, in the dead of winter, we terminated encampment in the McBike Park, but said the most diverse park in the city to actually allow encampment there, where the Mong community, where they're having their gardens, where the, the brothers are out there on the court juke and jive, where the Latino community had their soccer field and kids playing. It was more about the children. It was not that we don't care about encampment in our city, and not that we don't care about homelessness. This city has invested millions, millions into homelessness. Another thing I want to address is that when I visit, whether the Rynall Park or even First Street, the homeless shelter, one thing I noticed was that how they had a place for people that were intoxicated, where they had a place for people that had PTSD, and everybody wanted to, and I love that location because they had people sectioned off that wanted to be alone. And there, it was their right that they wanted to have that section, and I'm glad to see that. Same thing about Rynall Park, is that people wanted to have their, a, a, a place being away from people. And I think our residents of this city deserve that right, too. If they wanted to actually have a property that they don't want people trespassing on. So I believe this goes deeper than just that we don't care, that this is a fear. I also believe, too, you know, as I knocked doors in my district when I was first elected in 2021, we had a lot of kids that were breaking into vehicles in our district. we had a lot of kids that were breaking into vehicles in our district. And when they were breaking into vehicles, most of them were teenagers. I do not want to see any kid go on any property or trespass, even though they're in the wrong, probably stealing vehicles or whatever, to actually have somebody, from what I've even been seeing online, something happened to them. And I believe that we're moving in the wrong direction. On May 9th, I saw us get rid of a curfew order. I don't think that was right. Same thing with this. Just because MPD did not give out tickets for a kid violating the curfew, laws or ordinance are put in place so that kids do not, so they have, you know, so they're structured. So just like this ordinance, if something's not broke, don't try to fix it or make it a political statement. If there's no harm done, why are we trying? What is it like, like a fellow alder said, what are we trying to fix here? So let's focus on the issue. Like I said, this city, we have voted, given millions to address homelessness. Let's keep on focusing on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rumel?
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks, everyone, for the conversation tonight. I want to talk a little bit about an angle that we haven't really touched on. And it's the reason why I decided to be a sponsor. And that is the, I don't know about you all, but when I was running for Alder, since we're all telling our stories about running for Alder, I got an email from a member of the local continuum of care group, you know, and through the Homeless Services Consortium, they received funding from HUD to address homelessness. And the feds have a score when they, when people apply for money. And the goal is not to, you know, have things in the books that criminalize homelessness. And some examples that HUD gives are banning camping or sleeping in public and vagrancy, sitting, loitering or begging in public places, evictions from homeless camps, restrictions on panhandling and banning living in vehicles. And so when the COC has to fill out these applications, they are unable to say that our laws are, some of we don't have, that we do have some of these laws, given the fact that 20 subsection, 2307, 6A and B are on the books. And so that's what inspired me to sign on, because, you know what? That ARPA money is going to go away. And we need to make sure that, you know, we don't lose any opportunities for our local advocates to find resources from the feds. And then given the research that the committee members did and that threw off the officer, you know, and the police department did, we know this ordinance isn't really being used. But it has a fine, which somebody mentioned, that one of the co-chairs was concerned about. There's a $200 fine for sleeping on private property without permission. And so one other thing I want to mention is that when this ordinance went to the Homeless Issues Committee, you know, and meanwhile, people have been hearing all the concerns, we heard about this question about permission. And I think the substitute definitely tries to, heard that and tries to address it by adding a clause in subsection two that, you know, allows the individual, an individual give authorization to the police. And this was, I think, an effort to hear what the concerns were. And so I guess it's more than, I think, you know, people have spoken well about the concerns and, you know, what, if there's no real difference, what does this mean? And we have, like Alder Miazze said, addressed millions of dollars on this. But let's just take this, and with the view of, yeah, there is like federal rules about homelessness and we're trying to, to, you know, have the best practices here. And I think this ordinance, this appeal will help us just marginally make sure that we've covered those bases. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. So this one is, I'll just preface it by saying, this is the conversation and how I have the conversation with my constituents. Because a lot of this really comes down to educating ourselves and educating them. So one, I just want to say, I'm saying this as someone who is about 15 years removed from homelessness and maybe eight to 10 years removed from like, I don't know, two or three evictions in my lifetime. And so I've absolutely slept outside. And thankfully, I'm still here to tell that story. And so this conversation is reminding me of the conversations around the juvenile curfews, where there was some concern that kids were going to run wild, parents weren't going to be able to control them, and it was just going to get out of control. I don't think I've gotten any calls about juvenile crime escalating to the point that we were, some folks were concerned about the last time around, nor have I heard that juveniles, there's been like an increase in juvenile tickets since that the changes happened last time around. And so I just want to warn us, or at least caution us, not to set, like, we have a responsibility not to set our constituents out against people. Like, and we do that sometimes by just the way, the nature of how we're having conversations about folks. So for example, how folks were talking about juveniles the last time, folks could have absolutely, you know, set themselves out upon juveniles to make sure kids were in a house on time and, you know, out there patrolling the streets. But none of those things happened. And as folks have said over and over again, nothing really changes, no matter how this goes. Not really anything is going to change. So I asked earlier, we got some emails from Just Dane, and I sent a quick note and just asked, I said, hey, I've never found a program that provides money to help people cover their fees. So I also want you to know, they're, Just Dane didn't find a program either. So when folks are encountering fees and those fees begin to stack up, there really isn't a program out there to address that. So just keep that in mind when we're sort of like stacking debt onto people. The other thing I want to say is that we talked about, a lot of this is sleep, 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 sleep. And my hope is that many of you are realizing that sleep is a, very much a gap that needs to be addressed. So in my district of again, where I have the temporary shelter, the permanent shelter we built in a district bordering mine, I think District 3 is also dealing with some issues where, you know, there's just always folks who are dealing with homelessness who are just present in places where folks would prefer them not to be. And one of the gaps that has to be addressed that we, I think, should take upon ourselves to address is that in-between space, so people can sleep, so people can have their bags, so people can, I don't know, charge their phones, so people can just rest, so people can sort of like recoup their like peace of mind. And so sleep allows you, we all know sleep is this healthy thing that all of us hopefully will enjoy more of, you know, tonight. But sleep is important. And so the number one, one of the gaps that seems that we should be concerning ourselves with is addressing the gap in sleep. So the other thing, I just want to point out that as we're thinking about solving things that folks who are dealing with homelessness absolutely need to have solved, sleep, housing, storage, employment, clothing, food, and increasing their social supports. Most social supports come out of spaces in which people can gather, whether with their peers or resource providers. So as we're addressing this, as folks are deciding how they move along in various processes, you know, especially concerned with the budget, just think about, are we making decisions that address what you all have said? People need sleep and people are sleeping. You don't want them to sleep in public, it seems. Or you don't want them to sleep in residential properties. And I get it, I understand it. But then if they have nowhere to sleep, who's responsible for solving that problem? And I, low key, not low key, but high key, believe that it is us, the body, to do it. So again, I just want to reiterate, you all have identified a problem. The problem that you've identified is a lack of places to sleep. Then I just want, one last thing I want to say is that I have not heard any complaints except for Alder Evers sharing his personal testimony. But I can't tell you how many times I'm downtown and a young person, likely a student or a visiting family, and they are absolutely enjoying all kinds of residential spaces that do not belong to them. And so again, I just want you all to be conscious about how we are setting our own constituents up to think about other people in our community. So when I talk to folks, when someone reaches out to me and says, hey, I feel afraid, I was shopping at this store, and we just have a conversation. We come up with a plan. We come up, we talk about what made you afraid of this person. In order for this person not to exist in that space every time you go to Walgreens, what has to happen? This person has to have housing. This person has to have employment. This person likely needs addiction treatment. So we talk through those things and how they can show up to help solve those problems. So I think, again, I appreciate the alders who brought up the unattained consequences. There's actually some valid, some very valid points in that. But it is up to us to sort of like educate our folks on why this way of thinking about people in our community is not altogether, that's not even a healthy mindset to have walking around thinking about other people. So again, I just want to say, I am 15 years removed from homelessness. So when you're talking about homeless people, you really are like, yeah, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hopefully I can keep this brief, but I wanted to weave into both Alder Rumel and Alder Madison's comments, specifically being, I believe, the only person in this room that is a member of the Homeless Services Consortium and works within our local system. And so to kind of be more blunt than Alder Rumel was, our community applies as a community. So individual agencies will apply for HUD funding. There's a process going on right now. It's known as NOFO or Notice of Funds Funding Available, and it's released from the federal government. And then communities across the nation get to apply. Since I've been in the field eight years, we've always submitted a community application. So that means all of the organizations, so let's say YWCA wanted to apply for new housing, excuse me, housing program, they would apply. They would send in their information to the Continuum of Care Coordinator, COC, as Alder Rumel referenced it, for that person to then submit a community referral. So this has an impact on the funding, the amount of funding, whether or not we are a community, I'm forgetting the terminology, but high performing community. So we are compared to other communities around the nation. We're compared to LA, we're compared to San Francisco. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that there are individual organizations, but we are applying as Dane County because it is the Homeless Services Consortium of Dane County, not the Homeless Services Consortium of City of Madison. Also, if we don't have enough projects that apply for funding, we could not get funding at all. And the burnout is real of doing housing case management and trying to help folks navigate the very complex and unaffordable housing market we know we all have. So funding, we're talking about budget, heading into that. Something that has struck me, disturbed me, I'll say, tonight is how harm has been used. And I think I've heard there is no harm if it changes. There's no harm if it stays the same, and I would dispute that. There is harm. A couple meetings ago, maybe a month ago, we had a very passionate talk about housing and the state of our housing and what are we doing? And create, we have an agenda item ahead of us about creating a task force. There is harm. We have people living outside in our community. That in itself is harm. That in itself is trauma. And so I know the HSC and a lot of our agencies within that, we say we're committed to ending and preventing homelessness. Hopefully you all have responded to an email that came to you about the community plan for homelessness that our local COC coordinator is now working on. And that you provide this feedback, because that is also a leverage or a power of being an alder, of using your perspective, talking about our budgetary constraints, et cetera, et cetera. So another thing to liken this experience to is when we went through approving the CSC, Community Services Committee, funding slates for nonprofits to provide, it was, I think, school age, services for school age kids. But it doesn't really matter what the process is for an RFP. I think every year we keep hearing, the needs grow. The amount of people and providers may grow and step up into that, but the amount of funds does not grow. And so one of the things we have to reckon with as alders is no one's going to like our decision 100% of the time. But being a leader is making the right decision and coming to that decision by having as much information as possible. And so I would urge residents who are constituents, who are still with us, listening to the meeting, ourselves, city staff, anybody that's plugged in and obviously cares about the well-being of our community, to again, think about where our budgetary priorities are. If, for instance, let's say there hasn't been a lot of crime in a certain neighborhood, but we have a lot of residents in that neighborhood advocating for another officer or two or increased special services, for instance. But then a homeless shelter comes in and we talk about, well, these folks aren't paying taxes or what's the commitment to the community? And so I think one of my peers tonight said that folks who are experiencing houselessness are also part of our community. And so where are we going to put our effort into the budgetary things that we know are needed in terms of services for folks who may not even have a computer or a home or a place to plug in their phone and charge? So I think there's a lot of issues and misinformation that's been poured into this specific resolution. And so hopefully I clarified that about the process of getting funds. But also, the harm is we need to continue working towards solutions to provide affordable housing so that everyone who is seeking affordable housing has an opportunity to go. And we wouldn't be having conversations about this. Or it would look totally different because we'd be talking about a different population. But I'll end there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney for the second time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I absolutely know it's the second time, but I had to ring back in because there were some assumptions that was put out there that I just have to dispel. First off, for the first 10 years of my career, I was working at Madison Area Urban Ministry, now Just Dane. And my job was to go to those church basements. Every, every week, we did programming, I did programming in the basements of those churches. And so when someone says that, or insinuates that there is a disconnect in terms of caring about homelessness, I'm always going to, I'm going to step up and I'm going to say something about that. The other thing that I want to mention is the Dairy Drive location. And the Dairy Drive location is primarily funded through ARPA funds. It is very costly to run that Dairy Drive encampment. But you know what concerns me more is that when the ARPA funds runs out, what will happen to those individuals who are housed there? Some people, even when we get the purpose-built shelter completed, some people are just not going to go there. That's a reality. What's going to happen to them? I mean, I heard that the cost of maintaining the Dairy Drive location is over $70,000. And I don't know if that was a month, but I was like, wow, that blew my mind. And when we talk about educating our people, educating our constituents is correct. That's what we do. But to give us an opportunity to educate this, we're educating after the fact. I mean, many of the individuals who have sent emails and responded, they have supported homelessness, they've supported all of those initiatives that we are talking about. And so let's not put them in a lump bag. Is it that the way this was presented, before the educational was done, people were, and I don't, I don't go on Nextdoor because I know what Nextdoor means, but people who I have a great deal of respect for were concerned about this. And I go back and ask the question is, is that what did it fix and why? And why was it, you know, it's cleaning up the language. Fine, clean up the language. But at some point, we have to step back and begin to listen to the constituents, the people that elected us. The assumption is, is that I was not out there knocking on doors. I was out there knocking on doors. And people were concerned about well-being. And that is a fact. And so this ordinance caused more confusion, and it draws us away from what is important in Madison. And what's important in Madison is, is that we have a housing issue. There was an article in the paper on Sunday, and it talked about the critical housing issue that we're facing. And so we're spending time on changing an ordinance, we should be spending time on trying to figure out how to work through this budget gap, how to maintain the services that we have. We, our, our mayor has asked, the department has, to, to maintain their budget. I mean, we are in a critical space, and we're spending all this time talking about removing the language out of an ordinance, that's not going to change a hill. But the fact of it is, is that we need to refocus ourselves around what matters in Madison, this whole conversation about, you know, whether we care or not care. And so I was really upset when I even heard is, is that some of the Alders voted against the men's shelter. Yes, I voted against the location of the men's, I won't back off of that. I, I absolutely know that the, that men and women who are, quote, homeless, want to be close to the downtown area. They don't want to be way out where the, the current temporary shelter is. And so when you're making general conversations, just give us credit that we sit, one of 20 Alders, we sit in the same spaces and often hear the same conversations, but we care about the city of Madison, and it's about time that we start working together, rather than trying to work separating and apart. So that's my ranting. And Madam Mayor, I won't ring in again because that's my second time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. If I might, I feel the discussion is straying a little bit from the item before us. And so perhaps I could just remind us that the, the question at hand is an ordinance regarding the issue of trespassing, not the issue of homelessness. And while I, I have to say, I've been a little lenient because I actually really appreciate the fact that the council wants to discuss the issue of homelessness. It is one of the critical issues facing our community that is not what is before us right now. So if we could try and refocus onto the question of the actual ordinance amendment that is before us. Alder Evers for the second time.
For the second time, Mayor, thank you very much. And I appreciate the Alder from the 20th mentioning Just Dane. And I would want to make note that Linda Ketchum, the executive director of Just Dane, wrote all Alders today and encouraged us to amend the, this ordinance, to repeal this section. And I, I want to speak to the issues, try to clarify what I said before by bringing up also something that happened to me roughly 10 years ago on a cold rainy night. I came home and there was an intoxicated individual asleep on my porch. And I didn't quite know exactly what to do, and I called the police, and they came and took care of the situation and moved this individual on. What I was trying to say, and that it didn't matter a whole lot whether this was repealed or not, if it is repealed, trespassing will still be against the law and the city of Madison. The same situation that would come up if that individual, if someone is asleep on your porch when you come home, you call the police and have them removed. The person who slept on my porch that night wasn't aware of Madison General Ordinance, I can guarantee you. And he didn't think, well, it never entered, and it doesn't. The, the, the argument that somehow or another, the, the current ordinance exists as a deterrent is, I think, simply not rational. It's not, it doesn't function in that way currently. But I will acknowledge President Curry's concern that there is harm in doing nothing, and that the harm, and that we allow this, this ordinance that was written in 1994 that gives the appearance of, of being, potentially being used to target people who have nowhere to sleep and are sleeping on private property, can be viewed as criminalizing homelessness and may function as an impediment for the agencies in our city that are tasked with dealing with this very problem. For that reason alone, since this doesn't, will not have a functional impact, it doesn't change the trespassing ordinance, I encourage my fellow Alders to, to vote for the repeal, and I'd like to call the question.
Alder, there's only one other Alder in the queue at the moment to...
That's fine.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris.
Okay, don't grumble. No, I just wanted to ask Alder, President Curry, if what she was saying suggested that if we had this, if we had this language out of the, you know, the Madison General Ordinance, would that make the grants easier? So that's one question. And then, the other question, and maybe I missed it, and maybe my peers know, is why not strike the $200? The $200, it seems like that's causing, you know, a lot of the issues. Although there is an issue too of like, you know, we don't want to get into a, you know, standard ground state where people have, you know, say, oh, well, you know, I was afraid, and so, you know, I just shot somebody. And I, I did have, you know, my, you know, I'm not going to even get into this, but those are my two questions, actually. So I want to, want to know, can it, could the, I, I feel like this, 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 this ordinance is not, it's not settled, it's kind of like a Rindell Park or like the jail, you know, you know, the jail's not settled. Like, I have a different perspective on the jail because of, you know, my family's 45 years with my brother.
Alder.
Yeah, so I just want to say, I think it's not settled. So I want to ask those two questions and say, I probably am going to abstain, because I think it's not settled, I think it's like a, I think it's a band-aid. But if, if, if President Curry could answer that question, and somebody else speak on the 200, I'd appreciate it. Sorry, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, Alder. It's entirely up to the Alders if they would like to respond or not. Alder Govindarajan.
Thank you.
For, for the second time, and one of your colleagues has called the question, so...
I, I will just be really quick, I'm sorry. I just really want to talk about this because this has been an amount of misinformation that is really harmful. I feel like we, there's been a lot of emails about this, about stand your gun, stand your ground, and then the castle doctrine. We have to, as Alders, continue to educate people like, this is not what we are talking about. That's a very different issue that can get people into real trouble if they don't know what they're actually doing. So that is a very narrowly tailored law that is kind of for self-defense in a way, but that is not really what this is about. And we cannot be continuing to promote that in these discussions, because that will lead to people thinking that they are defending their homes and their selves, but eventually they might end up in jail. So we have to make sure that we are being very careful about what we are talking about. And I will quickly talk about the harm of this, because we were talking about that earlier as well. I have yet to hear why keeping this will prevent any harm, but removing this will prevent harm, because this, again, it prevents double charging of people, whether they're homeless or whether they have a home and they're just trespassing and sleeping. It will stop double charging, it will help promote the HUD funding, which I'm still learning more about, and it will stop criminalizing typical homelessness behavior, such as sleeping in public. So there is harm that is removed if we remove this ordinance as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion is to adopt the substitute, anticipating disagreement. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Madison. Alder Madison, aye. Aldo Martinez-Rutherford. Aldo Martinez-Rutherford, aye. Aldo Madsen. Aldo Madsen, no. Aldo Rumel.
Aye.
Aldo Rumel, aye. Aldo Slack. Aldo Slack, no. Aldo Tischler. Aldo Tischler, no. Aldo Verveer. Aldo Verveer, aye. Aldo Vitterver. Aldo Vitterver, aye. Aldo Hellias, excused. Aldo Bennett. Aldo Bennett, aye. Aldo Conklin. Aldo Conklin, aye. Aldo Curry. Aldo Curry, aye. Aldo Duncan. Aldo Duncan, aye. Aldo Evers. Aldo Evers, aye. Aldo Field.
Aye.
Field, aye. Aldo Figaro Cole. Aldo Figaro Cole, aye. Aldo Govindarajan. Aldo Govindarajan, aye. Aldo Harrington McKinney.
No.
Aldo Harrington McKinney, no. Aldo Knox. Aldo Knox, no. Aldo Latimer Burris.
Abstain.
Abstain. 13 ayes, 5 noes, 1 abstention.
With 13 ayes, the item passes. That will bring us to item 48. Item 48 is Legisstar 79719, supporting limitations on city purchases from nuclear weapons producers. President Curry, a motion, please.
Moved to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Seeing none of either, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 48. That brings us to the end of items that were excluded from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be introduced from the floor? Or any announcements? Seeing none of either, Alder Madison, it's your turn. Oh, I'm sorry, Aldo Latimer Burris, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I think that President Curry...
All right, Alder, you've muted yourself.
I think President, I just wanted to double-check that. I think, you know, I'm getting tired, but President Curry did introduce the bill from the floor, right? That's already done, so I don't need to do that.
Alder, President Curry introduced legislative file 80200, is that what you're referring to?
I think so. It was Hartmeier, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Now Alder Madison.
I'm just going to ask, what is it? That's all I was, because I couldn't find it in Legisstar.
It will be on your next agenda for additional...
Thank you.
And it will be in Legisstar soon, I believe. It should be there already, but, yeah.
And I can, I can sum it if, if, if Aldo Madison would like to sum.
I, Alder, if you'd want to send the text around to your colleagues, I think that would be sufficient.
Okay.
Alder, it is Alder Madison's turn? Alder Madison, it's your turn to make the motion. Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.